So, due to our mass violence event, the city has qualified for grant funds. The Anti-Terrorism and Emergency Assistance Program, or the AEAP grant, is one resource that the Office for Victims of Crime uses to support communities affected by mass violence like ourselves. Department of Justice consultants were onsite June through October, meeting with staff, victims, and families of the deceased to identify needs as a result of the May 31st incident. While we wait for our final needs assessment, the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services awarded the city a $3 million in federal pass-through funding through the Virginia, or sorry, Victims of Crime Act. This funding helped us establish the VB Strong Center. The emergency federal law enforcement assistance, or the AFLEA grant, was provided to the city for reimbursement funding for first responders who had overtime related to the city's response for the time period that the Emergency Operations Center was open. And this award was adopted by you all on November 19th. The VB Strong Center, through our partnership with Centerra, opened on October 29th at Lansdowne Commons. While opening resiliency centers like the VB Strong Center after a mass violence event has become the norm, the services and the way in which they deliver those services vary by the needs of the communities that they support. After being open two months, the VB Strong Center has already assessed and adapted to the needs of our community by shifting their hours beginning this month. While they have seen positive engagement through some groups, there is a need to continue to engage our victims, their family members, and our community as we heal. VB Strong staff will continue to outreach to impacted populations to show different ways the center can assist them in their recovery through navigation services, support groups, and alternative therapies. Another service that our victims may qualify for is the Virginia Victim Fund. The Virginia Victim Fund was onsite in the days immediately following our event. This state program was created to help victims of violent crime with out-of-pocket expenses. The city has collaborated with VVF to hold onsite hours to assist those who qualify to fill out applications. It is important to note that there are some eligibility requirements defined by Virginia law, and there is a one-year window to apply. To date, we have 194 applications submitted. And while VVF hasn't covered many expenses to date, this is to be expected as there are currently other collateral resources available, like life insurance and workers' comp. And to that, I will turn over to Jeff for workers' comp.
All right, so thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to give you an update since the last time I was able to get in front of you and talk about workers' compensation. So, as you can see, we'll go over some numbers. I ran this information as of January 2 of this year. As you can see, there's currently 489 workers' compensation claims that have been reported to the city. Of those 489 claims, 347 are reporting purposes only, meaning that the employee put in the paperwork to file the claim but was just doing it for reporting purposes only. They didn't seek any medical treatment and have no indemnity or lost wages due to it, what they've told us at the time. Of the 489, 142 of those claims are actually active, where there's actually treatment going on. Eleven of those 142 are fatalities, 11 more of those 142 are injuries, actual physical injuries, and the remaining 120 are non-physical injuries. To date, as of the second, workers' compensation has paid a little over $2.7 million. And as we discussed a little bit earlier in the year, we do have Safety National, who is our excess workers' compensation carrier. Typically, in a normal course of events, each individual claim is given a $1.25 million self-insured retention, which is just a really big deductible. In this case, they've given us $1.25 million as one self-insured retention for the whole event. And as of when we first put this together, we had already requested a little over $1 million back, and I'm happy to say we did actually receive that check Friday afternoon and is in the account on Monday.
So, counsel, we're about eight months after the event. Staff is in the process of developing plans for remembrance events at the one-year mark. They have a variety of activities and a ceremonial event in mind. Those would occur from Friday, May 29th, through Sunday, May 31st. Those plans aren't final yet. They're consulting with the stakeholders, including family members of the victims, employees from Building 2, and first responders. But we do hope in sometime in the not-too-distant future to be able to provide a briefing to you as to what we have in mind. So now, I'd like to move on to the update you on some of the investigations. The Police Department investigation, as you may recall, they gave a preliminary briefing in September. At this point in time, the interviews, and they did over 1,000 of them, are complete, and they are in the process of being compiled. The email review is nearly complete. There are no new revelations. Hillard Hines also reviewed emails, you may recall, and neither Hillard Hines nor the Police Department found anything that would suggest large data gaps or after-the-fact deletions in the email record. The Police Department anticipates completing its investigation in the fall of 2020. Meanwhile, the FBI has investigations underway, including trajectory analysis and profiling. We would expect they would be available at about the same time. In the meantime, we have formed a security assessment work group. This includes key players from Public Works, Emergency Management, Human Resources, Police, Fire, Sheriff's Office, and they've partnered with the Department of Homeland Security to take a look at the security surrounding city facilities. The scope of, when you say "city facilities," the scope is quite significant. It's somewhere around 300 buildings. They are large buildings, they are small buildings. Some are new, some are old. Some the city owns, some the city leases. Some allow public access, some are simply for city workers. Every building is a unique situation. Most of these buildings were constructed at a time when security considerations were simply very different and maybe nonexistent. You only need to look at the first floor here, I mean, the second floor here of Building 1, to realize that no one was really thinking security when they laid out this building. They were thinking open access to everybody. In the short run, what we're going to do in the budget is program more money for locks, these Linell-type lock systems, more alarm and alert systems, and also small building modifications where we can identify a pretty good project. A typical example might be what was just done for the City Attorney's Reception Area. We also have a project underway for the magistrate's area. So, things where there clearly are serious security concerns and a small modification project can address that. But long-term, this is going to be a very lengthy, ongoing process to upgrade these buildings or to abandon them and try to consolidate into larger buildings. But it's going to require a lot of time, it's going to require a long-term plan, and it's going to require a commitment of resources to do that. So at this point, I would turn to the Hillard Hines report, as directed by counsel. Staff is reviewing the Hillard Hines report. I would remind counsel that the scope that she was assigned, Hillard Hines, had really three primary directives. You told them to prepare a timeline and independent review of the event. You asked for an independent review of the relevant city policies, procedures, and practices. And you also asked for the recommended best practices for the city to consider in terms of public safety, human resources, and facility security. Again, both by your resolution and in the scope of the contract, independence was mandated. The auditor was to have no control of the substance of the review. In fact, that criteria was met. Hillard Hines was to have unrestricted access to, well, pretty much to everything. That also happened. And the report was to be prepared independently by Hillard Hines. So I want to stress, there was no draft review by the city. We saw that report when you and the public saw the report. Consequently, as a result of that, our review will point out some disagreements and exceptions with the Hillard Hines report. However, nothing that would alter the report's findings, that it was unlikely that this attack could have been anticipated or prevented. At this time, we're reviewing each of these 58 recommendations. They will be discussed in terms of those things, a number of things we are already doing or are doing in a form that has perhaps described a little differently than Hillard Hines described it. Actions that we look at and say, yeah, these are things that we need to implement and get in place as fast as we reasonably can. And other actions that need to be considered, one, for whether they're really feasible in our situation, what they would cost, and then we would have to look at the expected benefits in terms of that feasibility and cost analysis. Our plan would be to have this to you by February 18th, but I would say that this point that I'd like to not promise that and hope that we can do February 18th, but maybe certainly by the end of February. That is the end of my report. I do have all the, I'm here, plus all the subject matter experts for any questions that you might have.
Okay, any questions? John, Jess?
I don't know what slide number it was, but it was the workman's compensation slide.
11.
11? Can't see it on here, but maybe it's, oh, you're right there on my pencil. Now, I'll just make sure I got, so they, so if we had had multiple claims by multiple individuals, and they went over $1 million, then they were capping us at 1.25 because they're treating all that as one incident?
Correct. So, we have, one of our claims have gone over the 1.25. So, one claim is already capped, has, we've already gone over the 1.25 SIR with one claim. So, anything else is being included on that. So we have one stopgap level versus 489.
Yeah, so then we pay to another extent before something else kicks in, because I know we had this umbrella policy designed to that.
We have. So we pay for the first 1.25 million, then we have a $25 million gap where Safety National pays if, for any chance in the, because remember, for workers' comp, you have medical benefits for life.
Right.
If at some point in the lifetime of all of these claims it goes over 25 million, that's when the city would come back in and pay.
Secondly, have we contested any, adversely contested any work from compensation claims made?
We have had, of the, I've got it broken down, so of the 142 active claims, 160, we've accepted 116 of them. 13 are still in progress, meaning we're waiting for medical records, contact, and confirming no treatment. 13 have been denied. And yes, we have gone to the commission in one, in one case that I know of.
If some future data, I'd like to be in, I'd like to know what the denials were. I don't know if that'd hate to be an executive session, but I'd like to understand what we denied and why.
Yes, sir.
On Slide 14, dealing with the reporting, I know a couple counsel members here, specifically like Ms. Wooton and Ms. Henry, had mentioned that as we had finished this report, we were going to have some follow-on discussions, and maybe that will follow the staff review. But in terms of the security, I think it's important, while cost analysis is important, now we speak well for that. But I think the real issue here is the risk assessment isn't so much the cost. Cost is an independent variable always, so let's not put that aside like everything. All lives are priceless because we realize that's not true when it gets right to. But it should be a risk assessment first and foremost, and we should understand what the cost is to mitigate various levels of risk. And I think it's this body then determines, you know, where that balance is for different buildings, libraries from here, you know. Metal detectors sound great if you're doing a central building, metal detectors in gardens every library is another. And I'm just, want to make sure that when we see this analysis, that it is risk-based, and then the cost of the risk is understood versus what it costs to protect the buildings, because you can make anything close to prison-like, but that isn't always our objective. But I do think we need to understand the risk in first and the cost second.
Well, my office is heading up the work group right now, and the main thing with this is, yes, very much a risk-based assessment. Department of Homeland Security has kind of a small, medium, and large facility assessment tools. And they have come on board to be part of our work group and sit down to identify what buildings really need, a Building 1 needs a long, long-form risk assessment tool when we do this. Some of our smaller buildings or non-public access buildings, things like that. So we have, the good thing is, we have access to facility risk assessment tools, which is the way that we want to look at all of our security measures against the recommendations. We do not want to turn our city into Fort Knox, or any of our buildings into Fort Knox, but we want to make sure that we are assessing them appropriately.
And if I remember correctly, there was a request to come back and review with us building, the new City Hall building with us personally, so we could have a play and making sure we, and that was a request, I believe Ms. Henry was the one that mentioned that. But I do think that's important to come back so that we can, we can, that's like the people's house, so to speak, so that we can see what the criteria is up front versus seeing it at the end.
Well, and the Department of Homeland Security is already working with the design-build. We hooked them up almost immediately, so they're looking at that. So, I guess, yes, absolutely, they'll meet with you at some point. But just to let you all know, that Homeland Security is already working with the design-build office and the firm as Building 1 is coming together.
Two questions, thank you. Oh, thank you, Jess. And then Guy, then Michael.
Yes.
Thank you for bringing this brief. I received a number of calls about it. For the 489 claims that have been reported with no medical, is there a follow-up procedure we have for seeing if something's changed?
Absolutely. So, initially, when we received them, we knew that was reporting purposes only, and we know that times change, so ebbs and flows of claims. So, second week of August, we sent out a letter to everybody who was report purpose only, and it was a full one-pager, but essentially, it said, you've initially contacted, or sent paperwork to the city, said you've submitted a claim for reporting purposes only. If you are seeking treatment or currently seeking treatment, call us. If you think you're going to seek treatment, call us. And essentially, we were encouraging them to call us. If, you don't need to do anything if you're not seeking treatment or if you don't plan to seek treatment. So, it was a, it was a long, long kind of outline of that, but it was in detail and gave it who to contact. And so we sent that in mid-August, and we've, we've had some follow-ups, and we've actually had a few that, out of that letter, there have been a few claims that have opened up out of reported purposes only.
I don't mean to nitpick about the letter, but I know how insurance letters read. Is there, is it?
It's not a form letter, like you're used to.
So it's easier to digest?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, and then is there going to be a second slew that goes out, or what is the timeframe before we say, okay, this is no longer on our front burner? For the people that have filed with no medical.
For now, we wanted to get past the holidays. I would say probably by the end of this month, we're going to send that out again. Because I, you know, I listened last week, and I've heard you got a bit of feedback, and I love that feedback. If you, if there are any delays, because my staff hasn't, I asked them when you mentioned that.
Well, I'll sidebar with you on the specifics.
Absolutely. But we, if there are any delays, you know, there's ebbs and flows in claims, and we had 489 claims. So, through the AEAP grant, which Lauren talked about, we were able to get an extra gesture from Corbell to kind of help with the lagtime of claims. But if there's anything that, please have anybody call me directly if there's any issues with it, absolutely.
So, so what's the, so if, when, to my question, when do we say, okay, they, can they always report on these, on this claim if in a year they decide they want to start seeking treatment, or in two years, or is there a?
There is a two-year statute of limitations.
That's what I wanted to know, okay.
But what I would tell you, up until then, we kind of talked about this in our meeting earlier, is that, again, we know there's ebbs and flows, and we're coming up on the one-year anniversary. We know that we're going to be open and flexible to the workforce, and if there are claims that come in, that's fine. We know that's going to happen.
And then, will that answer that question? So of the, are claims only being paid via reimbursement, or are they being paid upfront to the provider?
For the most part, they're being paid directly to the provider.
So the, so we don't have employees that are primarily coming out of, a lot out of pocket?
They should not be. There are some that are.
Right.
But it's either been worked out through Corbell or their provider, whoever has happened, but for the most part, we're paying the providers directly.
Does that include co-pays?
They shouldn't have any co-pays.
Okay, well, there's, for mental health treatment, there's a $40 co-pay.
Not for workers' comp.
Oh, not for the workers' comp portion?
Correct.
Okay, because I, that's some.
If they use off-line, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then, well, so where are we at, and the claims that have been filed and there's medical, where are we at percentage paid? To date, I guess, because a lot of it's ongoing treatment.
Uh, you know, it's cyclical, so it depends upon medical billing. So, you know, we're within the 30-day window of typical medical billing. You know, Corbell is our third-party administrator who handles it. They handle it just like any health insurance carrier. The only time we would delay any treatment is only requesting medical records. So other than that, it's been seamless.
I think that's all I have on workers' comp. I had another question, though, about the security assessment. I'm sure this is being addressed through the work group. Is there going to be a full analysis of all of our buildings and kind of where, like a blind spot type report done, or is what we've kind of already gotten from Hillard Hines what we're going, what we can expect?
So, we were waiting to see what their recommendations are, because we didn't want to go back. So, as we come back together... So as we come back together, part of us is going to be looking at their recommendations and providing, and Tom's been working on those. But we have 300 buildings. So the first thing we want to do is prioritize the buildings that we want to assess. So as we're building our project plan, which that's kind of probably... We're not going to give you a big giant report. It'll probably be more of an update of where we are moving through those buildings.
Or one at a time.
Right. So as we sit down with our work group and determine our project plan forward, we definitely are going to prioritize the buildings and start moving through that way. But 300 buildings is a lot of buildings, but we want to... We want to look at the buildings, obviously, that have, you know, a large volume of people that go through, things like that, so.
And then for the... For the new buildings, I'm... I think you already answered this with John, but just for my clarification, we are planning on updating those builds as with the security recommendations. So those buildings will presumably be built already updated?
Correct.
With the recommendations?
Mm-hmm.
Is that... I think I said that right.
Correct. So buildings one, two, and 11 that get renovated will have enhanced security features.
But we won't be going back into those buildings?
No.
Okay.
Now, whether or not... One of the things that Hillard Heinz's report suggested were sort of these pods of places where police responders watch cameras 24 hours a day, capable of dashing into a building and opening any door with the flick of a button. We have a lot of discussion to have whether or not we want that level of expense of a response on any building, let alone those three. But there will be... All of the modern, state-of-the-art security features will go into the renovation of one, two, and 11.
And then the only other question I think probably for Tom is, have we submitted... Have we circulated like a security survey to the employees to see where they feel we are... They need heightened security?
Well, there were some questions... Some questions were asked by Hillard Heinz's report. Did you feel secure? They did not go into detail such as what do you think the city should do? Should we have the cameras? We did not do that. But there were data in the report about whether the employees felt secure before and after the event. We could certainly do something like that in our next surveys, ask some questions.
I think it would be interesting to see where employees feel they're vulnerable. I mean, that's a perspective that unless you're in those buildings every day, you're not going to have. So I'd be interested. I thought that that was something we had talked about as a group potentially doing, but that's all. Thank you.
Okay, Guy, Michael, then Rosemary.
I guess my question is about the Hillard Heinz's report and the police investigation also for that matter, and the attacker's personal computer, the status of that, which last we heard, I think it was with the FBI. Still is.
Yes, sir. The FBI is still... They're going through the forensics of what happened inside the building. We're also... Both entities are also looking at all of the electronic data, the electronic information that we can get. I do want to put everybody at ease right now. The FBI does not have computers that we do not have access to. I know that came out from someone that they have his quote "personal computer." That's really not true. Everything that the FBI has has been mirrored. We've already looked at it. We've already done our deep forensic investigation into it. They will then follow up on that. As far as interviews go, we have interviewed over 1,000 people. I don't know if there's anyone really left to interview, but we will continue. The detectives are doing an excellent job. We still have the task force up and running, and they will continue to go in that nature. The reason why that there is a rather lengthy time before the final report is done is it is the final report. It is the signed-off report, and it's also going to include the massive amount of information that will come not only from the FBI but from the Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms Bureau.
Thank you.
Okay, Michael?
My question is for Mr. Leahy. I'm particularly interested in the city's response to the Hillard Heinz's set of recommendations and maybe even more broadly than that, to the administration's policy response to the events that occurred on May 31st. I absolutely appreciate your suggested guideline that the review of the recommendations would be presented back to council sometime in February. And I absolutely do understand, too, the need for some flexibility there. And I think February 18th or somewhere around there is a reasonable timeline for that. But I do think it's very important to have a timeline and to incorporate some self-accountability in the analysis of those recommendations. If for no other reason than speaking for myself alone, of course, I wouldn't feel comfortable approaching May 31st, the anniversary of this event, and not having made some policy adjustments as a result of our analysis of the events that occurred that day, whether they be our own independent analysis or whether they be the recommendations that come from Hillard Heinz. I think the public and many members of this body are hoping to see some recommendations, acknowledging that maybe not all the recommendations made by Hillard Heinz are the right fit for Virginia Beach. But certainly, there must be some policies that would be changed or amended in some ways to reflect that.
I think you're going to find... As I indicated, you're going to find some that we're already doing, some that we think are a pretty good idea and need to go forward. And then there'll be some that I think we need to consider very carefully, given this idea of feasibility, cost. And as Councilman Moss talked about, you have to assess the risk and what are you... Is this something you want to do depending on what the risk is?
And I appreciate that. And I appreciate your sort of expedited timeline. I think February 18th or around there would be very good and I think would be appreciated by the public. A more technical question I have is the security assessment work group. Is that the same work group that's conducting the review of best practices?
Yes.
It is?
Yes, yes. All the same people that are...
All the same people.
Mm-hmm.
Could you tell... Well, I'll... Maybe I should tell you why I'm asking the question and maybe you can share some perspective on that work group. Because I noted in the Hillard Heinz's report, there were 58 recommendations, and 20 of them related to public safety, 27 related to human resources, only 11 related to public works facilities. And it appears to me the security assessment work group is relatively heavy in the public works... Well, I guess there are some human resources representation there.
So that's for the security assessment. Human resources is... Has their own group going through the 20... 27 recommendations for...
Right. I guess that's what I'm looking for, some clarification as to who is reviewing the recommendations from Hillard Heinz. Those 58 recommendations. If it's not the security assessment work group, it's broken out?
Steve, do you want to address that?
So the boss has broken that out into public safety, infrastructure, and human resources.
Oh, great.
Three broad areas.
Thank you.
So each of the DCMs of those portfolios are looking at putting that together.
Oh, they are? Great. Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Okay, Rosemary?
Okay.
And then Jess, and then Aaron.
I just want to ask about the non-employee that was lost. Is there anything being done for this... For his family?
We are engaged with all victims, and so as far as their needs, we can kind of talk offline about what's being done for them to respect their privacy.
We're only talking about the employees that... His family is not forgotten as well.
Not forgotten. We are engaged.
It's really important that their loss is significant, and we don't forget him as well.
Yeah. Thank you.
Jess, and then Aaron.
When... Since this was mostly about the physical building and what's being done in terms of risk assessment, when will we hear more about... Because I think, more on piggybacking on what Michael was saying, there were a lot of recommendations on what we could do to improve our human resources. So what are... When will we be seeing that as a part of all of the...
Hopefully, February 18th.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Since we haven't gotten to the one-year anniversary yet, I'm just curious. I know we talked a lot about our city staff and, you know, as far as the workforce and everything, but how are they doing? I mean, any department head or anyone that's... Whoever that can answer. I just... How are... How do you feel our work and our staff are doing? How do they feel?
I'll let Mark... I'll say a couple words. In many cases, some of the people who were affected that day are the people in charge now, and they are... They're getting through. But I'm going to let Mark talk a little bit about that.
Sure. And these are just my observations as director of Public Works. And if you want to go to slide seven, we're in disillusionment. That's where we are. People are getting better, but everybody gets triggers. And as soon as they get a trigger, something happens to them. So they slow down. They have to go home. And I'm not talking just... I'm not just talking about building two employees. Right. I'm talking about employees in other departments. And you don't hear about it till you talk to them one-on-one. So we're clearly in disillusionment. And I'll tell you, the Second Amendment issue, it tanked a lot of people. And they're coming out of that. So things like that happen. But overall, people are getting better. It used to be you had good workers, professionals. When you asked them to do something, they would do it. I mean, just like that, because that's what we did. We were efficient. Now, they would tell you, okay, I'm going to do it. They totally mean to do it, but it's going to take them three days to do it. Okay? So it's... It happens like that during the week. Everybody's good Monday through Wednesday. Thursday slows up. Friday's a little tough. And it's up and down.
What can I do as a councilman and as one of the 11 sitting around this table? And I don't want to, you know, I don't want the staff to feel as though, you know, you're coming around and you start getting in on their privacy and make... What can I do in general just to help out as far as increasing the morale? And I know that's a tough question. We can talk about this all along. But this stage, I'm familiar with it.
Yeah.
It's really, it's really, really tough, but I really feel this is the stage where we have to dig in deep and show our commitment to our city and staff and the victim's families to show that we are there. And that's the, I guess, the second part of the question, which, respect to the privacy we can have offline, but how are the families doing? Not from a workers' comp perspective, not from, you know, just from a general, how are you doing day-to-day? Someone to let them know the city. Even though the city, it may appear, the perception that we have gotten on or we're moving on, that's not the case, that we have... We are not moving on without them. So we can talk offline. I'm just curious to...
Okay. I'll tell you, the support you guys are showing is great. I think all the employees see it, and they know that you care as a body, and that is very much appreciative. Give us time. Give the employees time to get through this disillusionment period. And like Tom alluded to and what Department of Justice said, you know, 90% of us are coming back, you know? Almost hopefully 95%. There's going to be 5% that's not going to make it, and we're going to have to help them out. Another great thing is Lauren Heath. Lauren Heath is now on board. Her sole mission is to keep track of VB Strong, keep track of the employees, keep track of, you know, our injured. Okay? Support with that effort is a good thing because before we had Lauren, it was a collective group that was trying to keep track of everybody. And that's probably where you kind of heard or felt some frustration. I mean, there was frustration amongst us, you know, trying to make sure we were all coordinated in our communications and the help we were trying to give everybody. So give us time. Continue showing the support. I'm sure we're going to show you some numbers in the proposed budget.
Yeah.
So whatever you can do to help on that would be great.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
I got a funding question maybe for whoever... Yeah. On slide eight, the funding. I know the mayor and vice-mayor sent a letter to Richmond on the $30 million grant status. Where are we with that?
Is that for the... Sorry. Yeah, that...
It's... Bob Mathias is working that issue where it's early in the session. It's a little hard to know. And what we've asked, or at least what's been discussed and what we have asked the General Assembly for would be a $10 million grant and a $20 million no-interest loan. But at this point, we have no information as to how that's going to turn out. But as soon as we find out, we will let you know.
Okay. Okay. My last question would be for security assessment. We talked about the feasibility of 300 buildings and the cost of that, how that could be really, really high. And I don't know if the city can absorb that cost. So is there any movement at the state level to ask them to help far as during a security assessment and the aspect of whatever their findings or recommendations may or may not be? We can then try to get resources in that aspect of it?
And I think once we have a better idea of what it is, that's why we brought Homeland Security in, to help us move through that prioritization and kind of seeing maybe what our trends are in our gaps and then being... Having a better formalized request to the state to say, hey, these are our consistent gaps across the board. They may be seeing that in other cities as well so that we have a more formalized ask through the... Up to the state.
And have we asked them to study it or are we just asking for...
Right now, it's us sitting down with Department of Homeland Security to see where we are. And yes, we've talked about putting... We are putting in a CIP because it would maybe behoove us to bring in a consultant to help us who do this on a regular basis. But at this point, we want to make sure that we have a good ask. And that's why we have our Homeland Security rep with us because they do this. It's the physical security representative for the state of Virginia.
Okay. So they will be doing that assessment of our...
Yes. They are part of our work group. They're with us on a regular basis. He is in... Here on the East Coast, so we work with him on a regular basis.
So, okay, then would that be after you all come up with, I mean, whatever the ask is? Does that... We get that report and then it does it?
Yeah. My goal is to keep you all updated because I forget what our earmark was, that we were looking at a million to start out. I don't think a million's going to...
Yeah.
Solve any of this. So the most... The best thing that we can do is give you constant updates of where we are because there's 300 buildings, because it includes not only buildings and physical security but training, which is another aspect of this, and making sure that our workforce... We had a third of the workforce in building two that were trained in active shooter training.[1682.38] We want to get back to training, de-escalation training. So it's a, it's a holistic approach that we need to look at as we move forward with, with making our, our workforce here feel safe and comfortable.
Thank you. Hey, Jess?
I had a, Tom, I had something that Erin said, brought up another question. And it might be a risk management question. But for, what is our policy on leave right now? If people are, for the people that maybe didn't file medical but need to take time for whatever reason, are, are they eating into their leave? Or do we have a administrative approval to...
If someone was accepted under workman's compensation, they will get leave and it will be injury leave. And it won't be charged against their regular leave. If they are not, then it would be their own leave. Although we have a sick leave bank, so if they... And, and anybody jump in if I'm, get this wrong. If someone files a Family Medical Leave Act paperwork and after they have used their leave, they're allowed to essentially petition the workforce for leave donations. And that works quite often. That's quite often a big help.
Are we anticipating people maxing out their leave?
Now I get into a level of detail that I'm, I'm not...
We have been having conversations about the use of leave among our employees. Even as recently as today, we've had conversations about that. Our goal is to make sure that none of our employees are in a position where they feel as if they can't afford to take off because they don't have enough leave to do that. Our employees will not be in that position. For the most part, if they are one of the employees in Building Two or related, then, then yes, they have been going to the VB Strong Center. They have been going to their counseling sessions, whatever they have needed. And we are even going back to look at what has been occurring. Have we had some difficulties that we have overlooked, that we didn't know about? So that we can make sure that those have been taken care of. Because we do want to make sure that the employees are getting the help that they need.
But are we anticipating people maxing out their leave in the next year?
No.
Not, okay. So we think that just about everybody's okay?
Yes.
In terms of how much time they're taking and needing?
Yes. And, and as Tom was saying, even if they did get to the point at which, you know, leave is being used and they are running out, we have banks, you know, the leave donation program that will also make sure that they are getting the help they need. So no employee will go without.
Well, so just the, my concern with the bank is that's not a guarantee for anybody. So, I mean, is there enough bank, leave, leave banked in this bank that...
Yes.
So I assume if it becomes an issue, it'll come back as some kind of policy?
Right. There, even if, and I think what you're referring to is, let's say that we have someone that's not under a worker's comp, but they were in Building Two.
Right. That's what I'm concerned about.
Right. So in our discussion this morning, and, and we're going to be continuing that discussion. So we, we want to make sure that they never have to face what you're talking about. All right? And that's our goal.
As long as that's in our forefront, that's what my question is.
Front and center. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wood and then John.
Mrs. Abbott, if the employee was in Building Two on that day during that event, there's a high, high likelihood they are accepted by workman's compensation.
Even if they have no medical?
If they filed an application and they were in the building and they, I don't want to get into details as to who's filing on what claim, but they would be accepted and that would be injury leave. I think the ones that Jeff will tell you, if we were to have an offline talk or talk in executive session, people that aren't being accepted are people that were not at work that day or were not in the building that day and are filing workman's compensation claims.
I guess my, my concern is that somebody may have, may have been there, didn't, didn't feel that they had a, a physical injury or, you know, needed some kind of counseling or something like that, but have moments where they need to take time away and maybe, you know... It's such a challenge.
And they could still file. And, and if accepted, they could still file under workman's comp. And if accepted, all the leave they took would be converted to injury leave and all their leave would be restored.
But so they don't have to have had a physical injury?
No, they do not have to have a physical injury.
Or be treated for a counseling trauma to qualify for injury, is my question.
So, now I come in. Yeah. So, so injury leave is a human resources policy. What triggers the, the injury leave policy is a worker's compensation claim. And so, so for those people that were in the building and Building Two at the time of the incident and they reported a worker's compensation claim, for the most part, all of those claims are accepted because it fit in that criteria. There could potentially, and I hear where you're going, from a claims perspective, I hear you. That's probably a one-off. And so what I would say too is, is, you know, again, we're looking after the workforce. If something comes up and, and through communication, if, say if one of Mark's folks comes up, you know, and talks through the chain of command, hey, this person's having an issue. Maybe we should take a look at it. We can sit down with that employee and say, hey, maybe you should. And we can't make somebody put in a worker's compensation, but we can kind of have, have facilitated conversations to bring some of that out.
I think that's more what I was going for. Because we can't tell someone, you have to go see a counselor or you have to go take time for yourself. So what, what are we doing internally to make sure that those people are not robbing themselves of what they would be normally be their sick or normal vacation time and not getting, you know, because we can't make somebody go talk to someone.
And it's a values-based management conversation of looking at our workforce holistically, looking at where our gaps are, looking, I can tell you the departments have really looked at their workforce to see who was in the building, who was in, on, or around the building at the time, accounting for them, following up with them. Sure, there, there may be a couple misses here, but I think for the most part, the department heads and the staffs in each department, from that perspective, have dug down deep into their workforces and, and look for those people that may have not sought treatment. Because, you know, having been at the EOC that night, I didn't put in a worker's compensation claim. I, I would have qualified at some level maybe. But there are people like me and throughout the city who have been driving hard since day one and haven't put in a claim, haven't sought treatment. And so at some point, there may be a downtime where those people kind of go, take a second look at themselves in the mirror and go, hmm, man, maybe I need to go look at some treatment. And so, yeah, there's, there's some people out there. But I think we're forever vigilant, looking at those people and, and keeping them at the forefront. And we, we watch for it all the time.
I'm a lot more cynical about the worker's comp claims because in my experience, they're not that easy to get paid. So that's why I was questioning, like, what are we doing for the people that might fall through the cracks?
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then Sabrina.
Just one question for Erin. So those, those, those buildings do not include the school buildings, correct?
So the schools have their own process and they work with Department of Homeland Security as well and do their own safety audits.
But I mean, if we're talking about globally throughout the entire city, we're talking more like 400-plus buildings. Yeah, schools and, okay. I just think it's kind of important to know that it's not just one area. And the school's been working on it for several years.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And we're not, we will be talking to the schools too and utilizing some of their best practices as well.
It's just a bigger issue than, than, than what we're looking at here, I think. And that's important. All right, thanks.
Sabrina.
Now, if, if, you know, hopefully I'm not being redundant, but possibly I missed something. In terms of processing claims by employees, I remember hearing earlier that it was timely, well, excuse me, that it... It, it's taking a long time to process those claims.
Yes.
And last week, I spoke with some individuals who still said the same thing. So can you kind of tell me, what, what is that process like? What is the timeframe? Can employees expect to have something happen when they...
Today, there should be no delay.
Okay.
So if, if there's any delays, my staff and I need to know about it so we can address that quickly. But as we, as, as time has gone by, you know, it, it's one of those, it's like a, it's like a wave. So you have that big wave of claims coming in. And as we've been able to redirect resources, and that's the benefit of having a third-party administrator helping you, they, they can bundle resources. We were able to get another resource through the AEAP grant. So we will, we're able to put a lot of resources into it. And so as the wave come down, comes down, you know, there are still some trickling things that come from time to time. And again, the process isn't perfect. So even in a normal casework, some things fall through just of human failure. But I would say today, there should be no issues. If there are issues, I need to know about it and my staff needs about it so I can take care of it.
Okay, absolutely. I'll make sure I refer back here.
Absolutely. Yes.
The other part of my question, and then I have just one clarification. The other part of the question, and I'm not sure if it would be you, but, gosh, kind of lost my train of thought on that one. My comment then would be, in terms of last week when I asked about following up and having a discussion on security, with the February date that you talked about, is that the time when we'll have that discussion amongst ourselves as council about what's being done or what we, what the plan will be moving forward? Because I, as I mentioned last week about the correspondence that went forward to the General Assembly about some of the plans we had, the information wasn't really discussed. So I just wanted to know, is that going to be the time when we have that discussion amongst ourselves?
Well, on February 18th, we plan to bring you back our review of the Hillard Hines Report. As I indicated, there are some places that we're just going to have to tell you that we take exception or we disagree. But then we'll be going through every single recommendation in that report. And there will be a little analysis as to, okay, do we already do this in one form or another? Is this something we should do, yes or no? Is this something that we shouldn't do? And, and we would give reasons why. The security assessment process is much longer, much more extensive. This is something that would go on, hazard to take a guess at what it would cost to, to get through all 300 buildings, but to look at the security of those buildings. But it is clearly going to be in the seven figures numbers and it is going to be years in the analysis. Certainly, what we, what I think the mayor told the General Assembly, and we helped put that together, was that certainly as we're building new buildings, we're going to be taking in, we're going to be implementing the most modern thinking about security and how to handle security. And we're actually using, the Homeland Security people are working right now, as Erin indicated. They're looking over the, what's going into the City Hall now. And they will, in the re-renovating of these three buildings, we will have the best thinking on security going into that. And, and also things that we may think are, are not affordable, but that doesn't mean we can't lay out, for example, that we can't, we'll lay out the wiring. The buildings will be designed so that they can be monitored. If that's what the, at some point in time, you need to monitor every square inch of the building. The wiring and the stuff behind the walls will be there so that you can do that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, anybody else? Just want to thank you very much, you know, for the report. I know it was interim, but I think it was important to demonstrate that the city has been moving forward in a way. And a lot of things, there's a lot of wheels in motion. Tomorrow, the Vice Mayor and I are going to Richmond, you know, to, you know, to talk with the delegation. If it's okay, could we get copies of, you know, you got them? We'll have them. We'll take that up and give it...
Any as you want. I'll get them for you.
Yeah, you know, to the delegation. But, but once again, I want to thank you all. It's a total team effort, you know, for this most complex problem. And I just want to thank everybody for what you continue. This is an ongoing thing, but this is a situation that's going to be with us in perpetuity going forward. And it's going to be a very long road that we're going to be on. But once again, the steps we're taking now, I think, are very, very positive steps in that right direction. Thank you all very much. Mr. Leidy, thank you.
Thank you. So Mayor, members of council, we'll change up a little bit. We'll be moving to another major challenge the city faces, and that's sea level rise and recurrent flooding. We are coming to the completion of our four-year sea level rise and recurrent flooding study. Today, we've got Tony Utterback, who is the head of our Stormwater Engineering Center. And is Brian Batten here?
Yes.
And we have Brian Batten, who is the project manager from Dewberry of our study. Tony, you want to introduce all, everybody?
I will. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. I want to point out the team. This has been a, a long, long program. We're, we are at the goal line here with the Sea Level Wise Adaptation Strategy Report. So I want to introduce, Dr. Brian Batten will be presenting with me. I have the, the city engineers here, Phil Pollan, CJ Bodnar, who's been kind of the face of the Sea Level Rise presentations. He manages my technical services group in the Stormwater Engineering Center. Back in the back, I have Sue Kribel, who's the project manager for this project. And with her is Amanda Medley. So I'm going to begin with a quick overview of the project. And then Dr. Brian Batten's going to get up and give you a, it's a quick synopsis because if you saw the report, it's over 300 pages long. So he will be going over the strategy report. And then I will get back up and talk about moving forward, the public engagement meeting schedule, the next steps, and give you an update on the Army Corps of Engineers feasibility study. Oops, I'm sorry. So as Tom mentioned, we, this has been a four-year project. We started back in 2015. Here we are in 2020. As I mentioned, we're going to start going to the public with this report at the end of January and into February. We're going to conclude the NOAA grant and finish our obligations for that at the end of March. And we're going to continue to look for ways to fund these adaptation strategies and implement some of them. So in order to better understand flooding, recurrent flooding in the city, we did a lot of studies. So one of the first things we looked at was rainfall and surge. And we wanted to answer the question, how often does a heavy rain coincide with elevated water levels in the bay or the ocean? Turns out, it's about 50% of the time. And then we looked at regional precipitation trends. And we looked at historical and future precipitation and determined that it's actually raining harder and more frequently. And finally, we studied the water level response to wind tides in the southern watershed. And we did all of this to be better informed and make informed decisions because we knew we had to make changes to the stormwater design standards. So these two tables shown on this slide on the right side are some of the major changes that we've actually included in our draft Public Works Design Standards. The top table is showing where we are now requiring that design rainfall depths be increased by 20%. And the bottom right table is showing where we're now asking the design engineers to look at not only rainfall, but rainfall and tide together to come up with higher tailwater elevations for their designs. Now, this is important because we want to make sure that the stormwater infrastructure that's designed and constructed today will be able to handle these higher sea levels and harder rainfalls in the future. So speaking of the Public Works Design Standards manual, we, the draft manual was complete in May, in May of last year. We went out for a public comment period between May and August. We presented the document to the engineering and development community at the end of August. We received their comments and then hired a third party to review those comments and also to review the document and make any suggestions on changes that may be required. We're in the process right now of making those changes to the document. We plan to go back out to the public in February and present the document for adoption by Planning Commission and City Council in the April and May timeframe. So getting back to the Sea Level Wise Report, the structural flood defense strategies that have been identified start at the top with citywide strategies. We presented this to you earlier last year. These are the large structures that include in-water floodgates. They will protect the city against three feet of sea level rise plus 100-year coastal flood event on top of that. They're very expensive, in the billions of dollars. Then we have the neighborhood level strategies. These will protect high-risk areas from combined effects of sea level rise from the one-and-a-half, two, three-foot scenario on top of a coastal flood event between 10-year and 50-year recurrence. These are less expensive and they range between $30 to $225 million. Brian will go over more detail on these shortly. And then we have the site level strategies, which are going to address the high-risk properties. These may include flood walls, elevations, or voluntary acquisitions. And finally, the natural and nature-based features. These are considered complementary flood risk management strategies. They will work in conjunction with the citywide, the neighborhood, and the site-level strategies to enhance the performance and durability of those structures. I'm going to now turn it over to Dr. Brian Batten, who will go over the report for you. I will come back up again at the end and talk about the next steps.
All right, thanks, Danny. It's good to be here today. Thanks for having me. So the challenge today is, you know, I, I know you... I know you all received one of these in your packet. We're trying to get through this rather lengthy report in a short amount of time. We'll try to do that as best we can and give you some detail and so get through this. So let me get this guy ready. All right. So what does the report represent? And as Tony says, she showed a timeline there. We started working for the city back in 2015 and have gone down a road to get through this study. And sometimes it's had some different curves where we've investigated some different things in that amount of time. We've gone through, I think, 20, you know, significant technical reports, over 1,400 pages of documentation. And what we wanted to do was really, you know, tell the story of the study without having all the technical jargon in that, really make it accessible and relatable to a wide range of stakeholders in the city as a whole, essentially tell the story of the study and easily digestible. the study in an easily digestible way. The report kind of summarizes the range of adaptation initiatives. It leaves some, you know, it's not, doesn't result in super-specific projects to allow the city leeway and the city staff to investigate some of these further for feasibility, funding, and sequencing priorities, and identify some other additional research needs. The report's broken into five pieces, and essentially just to tell the story of the study from beginning to end, why we did this, what the problems are, what can we do about it, add some detail, and where do we go from here. And we'll touch on each one of these briefly, you know, in the coming presentation. Well, you know, if you have questions about further details, certainly happy to answer them. So the introduction section is really about, why did we do this study and what did we do? We have this graphic here on the slide, it's just talking about the genesis of everything, and this is a diagram of flood call density, and people picking up the phone complaining about water in the yard, in the road, in their house, and if you look at later information in the document, you'll see a lot of this does correlate to some of the high-risk areas in the city for flooding that do need mitigation actions. The other thing we want to mention here is, this is both stormwater and coastal flooding. We're really primarily focused on that coastal flood problem, but working with the master drainage study, so the city has a holistic solution. One of the other pieces captured in here is public engagement. So far to date, we've had two rounds of public meetings. The first one is really to talk about, hey, we've looked at some of the problems with flooding, the causes, and communicate that information out to the public, try to build a little more awareness and let them know what we're doing. And then, you know, an initial round of some of the different structural and nature-based solutions. And working with ODU and their social scientists, you know, it was good to get out with the, with the public stakeholders and gather a lot of feedback. There were surveys that were implemented within the meetings, and we were able to capture a good amount of responses on different topics. In those responses, we worked, our team worked to capture them throughout the document, where they hit on relevant topics, and there's also a spread about some of their understanding of the issues, and some of their perceptions and thoughts about what the city could do. So that moves us into the Understanding Flood Risk section. We talked about this a couple times before, but this really identifies what are the problems the city faces and what will they look like. Another title we could have for this slide is "It's Complicated." This just shows with the blue arrows coming into the city, these are the different pathways for coastal floodwaters to enter Virginia Beach. And it's not a simple issue. We have waters coming in from the Atlantic Ocean, the Chesapeake Bay, also through your neighboring city of Norfolk, into the Elizabeth River, down the canal, and coming up West Creek, and then from the state of North Carolina into Back Bay. So it's a situation that is somewhat complicated because of the many different directions, and also the adjacent municipalities and states, but the, the good news here is there's opportunities, the way this flooding works, to, you know, use some strategic placement of flood defenses to try to lessen the impacts, and we'll get to that later. Understanding flood risks, and we wanted to understand what the problem is today, and then how it's going to change with sea level rise, really what we were charged to do. The graph on the, your left, it shows the various federal sea level rise scenarios that are put out there by the Army Corps of Engineers and NOAA. And the little black boxes, you know, are the ranges we sampled in for this study. They're like the planning horizon. So we looked to the 2040s and the 2070s, sampled these curves, and said, let's use a medium-range scenario, and that ended up being one-and-a-half and three feet respectively, to plan for and assess the impacts to the city for this issue. One thing we want to acknowledge here, you can see these very different curves on the graph, and so there's some uncertainty about what might happen with sea level rise, and we hear of that often in the debate of some of these things. One thing we want to point to is this work done by VIMS. They're not only a regional leader, but a national leader in some of these issues, and they've done great work to go into these gauges, and this is showing Norfolk, which is the best water record around here for long-term change, and the squiggly line is the historical record. And in that historical record, they see that sea level rise is not only, it's not only coming up, but it's accelerating. And if they move that acceleration out to the 2050s, we get a middle-range scenario of one-and-a-half feet, which is what the study is planning for. So this puts it to a question, if it will happen, it's when it will happen. So they are seeing it in the record right now, you know, the scientists at VIMS, and VIMS does this work for the state of Virginia as well. So we have the sea level rise increase. What does it mean to flooding, to, you know, sunny day flooding, to storm surge-type flooding? We use a variety of tools to assess that for the city, and we also want to acknowledge that it's not just a coastal flood problem, there's ties to other parts of the whole water system. So these increased coastal water levels raise up what, you know, where the outlets are for the drainage for the stormwater system, and as this level rises, what's called the tailwater, now you can't get water out. And so it causes the stormwater system to back up more, so there has to be considerations to that, so it'll continue functioning. We want to acknowledge the development that's happened in the city and how that's changed runoff and exacerbated the problem. We have some infrastructures, especially drainage, that's 30 years old or more, that wasn't designed to accommodate these changing conditions. And one thing we found, as Tony talked about, rainfall's changing as well and increasing. So how do we, you know, inform the design of that and look forward to the future so it continues to work? Some groundwater is rising, and then ecological decline, and this is the marsh system feeling the effects of some of these issues and starting to fragment and come apart. So we looked, not at all of these issues in detail, but we did try to touch on them and mention them, and one thing we want to do is use our toolset to quantify, what does it mean in terms of the future floodplain? Where is it? Where is it going to be? But we can also look at different kind of storm events and use a flood risk economic model to quantify, what does this mean to the city in terms of dollars? A metric called average analyzed losses. So this is looking at, you know, what's the given cost of the city for any given year for storm loss? And we, we get two things from that, and we do this down to the individual building level in the city, using the framework, but the picture in the upper right is just showing, where are these losses going to occur? This is for three feet of sea level rise, so we want to see, we have it for each one, but we want to see how it's going to change. But where is it going to occur? How widespread? And where are the focused areas of risk, which are those red kind of hot areas on this heat map? Those are the areas we want to look to for strategies to try to buy that risk down in the long term. And if we sum up all these numbers across the city, we can have this chart like below that says, how is this overall risk changing? So from today to the 2040s, it increases about three times, and as you get to the 2070s, it's about a 12x increase. So it's just reflective that the floods are going to happen more often, they're going to be deeper, it's going to cause more damage, so how, what do you do about all that? And that's where we get to the Adaptation Framework section. So how do we address this problem? It's a complex problem. There's not a single solution. So our team has identified kind of four layers, themes, whatever you want to call them, to try to holistically address the issue across an array of strategies. These include natural mitigations, engineered defenses, adaptive structures, and prepared communities. We'll go into each one of these a little bit as we move forward. The one key thing that we want to point out, that how does this get done? The city has to have the commitment and the leadership to do it. It's doing a lot of this already, but it's taking what's been learned through this effort, integrating it into decision-making, informing, planning, and looking to finance and move forward some of the options. So we take these four themes, and we have subthemes underneath them that are, you know, individual strategies, and then these are kind of detailed out in the report. This is kind of a map of all of them, and it gets a little hard to decipher everything, but it's just showing, you know, if we look to impose these kind of things on the city, where do they happen and what do they look like? And what we'll do, you know, to move through this, we'll take each of the four themes, we'll talk about it real quickly and what the tools are underneath it, and we'll look at it on watershed-by-watershed level, so you can see a little bit more of the detail. So natural mitigations, we want to use these to lessen the impacts of flooding, but there's a dual benefit in that, it has ecological benefits and water quality benefits. The strategies in this toolkit include everything from land conservation, so we want to not develop areas that are not developed and flood vulnerable, and we can do that through an array of strategies. And the second one is using natural features. So this is using living shorelines to maintain the aesthetics of a, a natural ecosystem, having those water quality benefits, and also using marsh restoration where possible to try to, you know, reclaim some of what we call the friction in the water column to slow the floodwaters down. And these maps kind of show the various application areas for these strategies. Engineered defenses, Tony kind of gave us a segue into there, and here, what we're looking to do is how do we intervene in the propagation of floodwaters to these high-risk areas? What, what kind of approaches can we use to keep that from happening? We have a toolkit that consists of raised roadways, levees, floodwalls, seawalls, floodgates, and we looked at two types of approaches. One is a citywide approach, which is using a high design level intended to protect a large amount of people, but it's expensive in a neighborhood approach. And I'll just briefly go into each one and talk about the outcomes of them. So the citywide approach, just to reiterate, uses 100-year flood standard for the design flood elevation at the three-foot sea level rise scenario in that future, in that 2070 scenario. It uses that because it's looking at a long timeframe for the feasibility, the design, construction, and financing of those options. They're very expensive and in the billions of dollars. We had a process to identify these. If you think back to that flood pathway diagram, we, we looked at that flood pathway diagram and the risk within the city. We had 12 different what are called alignments or pieces of the puzzle that would stop flooding from coming into the city, and then we mixed and matched those 12. We had 10 alternatives that were combinations of that, and we whittled it down to these three through an evaluation process. The first one, A, is looking at the Chesapeake, what's called the Chesapeake Bay alignment, and it's really at the Lynn Haven inlet. It's the gateway of floodwaters into the middle of the city. So by putting, by raising up the shoreline, using natural features such as raising the dune and the beach, but also having a gate at the Lynn Haven, it mitigates flooding up to 27,000 or more structures in that future condition scenario. B and C just kind of build on that option by adding protection for the central part of the city and the southern part of the city. And finally, C is just adding a gate on the Elizabeth River, which would have to be coordinated with Norfolk and the Army Corps of Engineers, et cetera. Take a breath. But again, these alternatives are expensive. They range from just over $1 billion to $2.4 billion. The design feasibility process is long. You require a core feasibility study, a federal cost share most likely, but they all offering a protection to a large amount of structures in the city, from 27,000 to 45,000 structures within the city, is the protection these offer. If we go to the neighborhood level, a couple differences in what the approach is here. Rather than designing to this 100-year standard, and that's a standard that gets federal certification, so you get flood insurance rate reductions behind it and all those other things, here, we say, how can we lower the design standard to provide protection against those really more repetitive recurrent events that we know are definitely going to happen, to lower the cost, to shorten the timeline to construction, and allow a sooner, to allow construction and protection on a, on a shorter timeframe? We looked at this, these are, are looked at on like a neighborhood, or we call a reach basis. We looked at 14 areas of the city, and using just some criteria, was there an existing project already? Is it a, a place that's suitable for this? We kind of narrowed it down to five areas, which include east and west of the Lesnar Bridge, what's called Rudy Heights, so that's really inside of Rudy, Lake Rudy, Sand Bridge, Sigma, and then Muddy Creek Road. And a couple differences just to point out here to finish this discussion. So the citywide alternatives protect like 27,000 to 45,000 structures. The largest one of these only protects like 2,700 structures. So it's protecting much less of these areas, but it is protecting some of the areas that are already affected by recurrent flooding. Rather than one to two-and-a-half billion dollars, the costs range from 15 to $70 million. So it's, we've moved the zero over both in cost and the level of protection. One thing we want to remember, though, rather than designing to 100-year storm and having freeboard and federal certification, we're using like a value-based engineering protection approach, so it's designed to like most of these 50-year storm. So there's a possibility a big storm comes after these are built, they're overtop, people behind them get flooded, and they'll complain to the city of this, a false sense of protection, and they could feel, you know, like they weren't adequately protected. So that's the risk here. There's a lot of residual risk with the neighborhood structures. One last bit on them, some of them are compatible with the citywide strategies and some of them aren't. So, you know, what to do between these two in the final decisions are something the city has to consider, and a lot of that could happen through that Army Corps of Engineers feasibility study. We'll move on to adapted structures, and next, the third or the fourth theme. And here, we're looking to reduce the impacts of flooding through informed site design, permitting, and retrofitting of existing structures. Two, two parts, this is really site and design, but one of the tools here, just to give you an example, is the floodplain ordinance. So maybe rather than regulating the floodplain ordinance to today's floodplain, the city could decide to regulate to the 500-year floodplain or the future 100-year floodplain, and impose some of those building and site restrictions and maybe freeboard values into those other areas, which would, as sea level rises, the flooding increases, add some more resilience, and reduce damages in the long term. The other part we want to talk about is site level, parcel level mitigations, and this is, a lot of work was done here, but this is looking at the individual home, where there are opportunities to elevate structures or reconstruct them to a higher standard to, you know, move them out of harm's way, and also, this also lowers their flood insurance benefits, and, and we have stuff like voluntary acquisition where we could remove folks from the floodplain permanently. The other part that goes along with this is having some city programs to help the individuals, you know, get through this process. And what you see on the map here is an analysis of structures where they're all cost beneficial, meaning you get a dollar back for every dollar you spend in terms of mitigation. Infrastructure vulnerabilities, this is your critical infrastructure, and we just want to acknowledge here, you know, these are, the hospitals, the schools, police stations, et cetera, provide critical services to the city. We want to be aware of which ones are vulnerable to flooding, maybe have some site mitigation or operational considerations for when an event does occur, or move equipment to parts of the buildings that are not vulnerable. And also, as future facilities are sited or maintained, et cetera, how do you move them out of harm's way? And this does require some coordination with the private utilities and, and your regional utilities as well. The last one, but not least, is prepared communities, and this kind of encapsulates or addresses social and financial vulnerabilities, and addressing this through education and, and financing programs, but really looking at stuff from, how flood-aware are the citizens in the community? Do they understand, if they don't have a flood insurance policy, do they know they're vulnerable to flooding or not? We really, you know, in our surveys and meetings, 70% of the people that came that didn't have a flood insurance policy said they didn't know if they were, they were vulnerable to flooding or not. So it's really letting them know more about, you know, what their potential risk might be, what some of the steps they can take to reduce that is. And then on the economic side, you know, one example there is for folks that do have flood risk or may have flood risk, get in a flood insurance policy if you're not in the floodplain. You can get a discounted preferred risk policy, and that ties into stuff like the military too, where you have military families coming in to rent a home, they may not even know if the building's in the floodplain or not that they're renting. Their spouse may be out of deployment, the house gets flooded, and they're there to deal with all that. So how do you help them avoid those situations? So watershed strategies, what we want to do, these are kind of broad themes, broad applications, there's some site-specific stuff, but, you know, we know Virginia Beach is not just the resort area. I know a lot of people think about it that way, but it's very diverse and, and has a lot of varying characteristics. And we looked at the city using its four main watersheds, and this is kind of areas, you know, where we can look at the Lynn Haven, the oceanfront, southern rivers, and Elizabeth River, and each of these have very distinct land use, vulnerability, and other considerations that, that really affect how we apply these strategies. They're not all ubiquitous, we apply, they kind of got to be tailored to those characteristics. One thing we want to point out here, and just to illustrate that, we have these two pie charts, and this one on the left represents like flood risk today. So in general, any given year, the flood damages, 75% of the city's like coastal flood exposures in the Lynn Haven watershed right now. With three feet of sea level rise, that changes to about 45% with, well, 48% with the southern picking up the other 45. Why does it do that? Because the southern watershed is so low-lined, there's a lot of area for that floodplain to expand and start wetting new buildings and really raising up those impacts there, and that does not- And that does not consider any future development that may occur. So these are all things we want to consider as we say, what should we do about the problem? Just to further illustrate some of the differences, our team prepared these kind of four cross-sections so we can say, hey, the Elizabeth River, we have mixed development. We have a riverine inland system. We can use a gate, some living shorelines, the Lynn Haven, the Chesapeake Bay waterfront, to the Back Bay going into town center, and of course, oceanfront, the economic engine of the city. And Southern River is a very different environment where we have Barrier Island separating the ocean from an extensive Back Bay and extensive low-line areas. So what happens when we look at each one of these? Again, some of these strategies are more ubiquitous, and a great example of that is prepared communities. And these are color-coded to the different items on the map to just kind of illustrate where they go. But the prepared communities kind of circle around the whole watershed, say, hey, this is something we need to do everywhere. And if you look at the citywide figure, it's the same. But, you know, from a natural mitigation side, which is the green, within the waterway, we want to look at living shorelines to protect that shoreline, have that first line of defense, marsh restoration where possible, adapted structures, which is this lighter green, we have SGA. So we should really focus development, redevelopment within the SGA's. And this other lighter hatched area, which is maybe a little hard to see, are areas that we call high and dry areas of the city. So this is where we don't expect future flooding to reach in those future conditions. So the suggestion is to, if you're going to develop redevelopment, et cetera, put all this away from this future floodplain so you don't put yourself in the situation where you have deferred risk that'll come up towards, you know, in the future. Engineered defenses for the Elizabeth River watershed, we see this red swatch out here, and that's the gate. It's at the old Ford plant location in the city of Norfolk. This site was chosen because if you look within the watershed and the shoreline, a lot of it's low-lined. There's just not great opportunities for like a neighborhood-type defense strategy. If you look at the Army Corps study for Norfolk, they have a gate on Broad Creek. Why do they have it there? Because that study by the Corps, their authorization for it was limited to the city of Norfolk, so they couldn't look at the area as a whole and holistically consider what the benefits might be to Virginia Beach, to Norfolk and Chesapeake. So through some of those considerations, we, you know, conceptually placed the structure out here. The city's had some conversations with the Corps, with Norfolk, with Chesapeake, and everybody seems open to the idea of considering, hey, let's evaluate the feasibility of this and of what we have already. All right, we'll move on to the Lynn Haven. I'll just go through each one quickly. Natural mitigations, we have the Chesapeake Bay shoreline. Right now, there's some nourishment that already goes on there. We want to continue that and expand it to the whole shoreline to maintain it, build it up where it's low already and can be overtopped. Within the bay itself, use the living shorelines, nature-based features to, again, protect that ecosystem and maintain that function, the water quality aspects, et cetera. Engineered defenses, there's a couple different strategies at play here. We talked a bit about the Lynn Haven inlet gate. That's certainly a feature of that. That's this big, long line of red, which is saying, hey, we could take that beach dune system, build it up. Possibly, if you want certification, you have to have a solid core to the dune, like sheet pile or rock, and then the gate at the Lynn Haven inlet. And then we get to where we start to think about, okay, we have this strategy, and then we have the neighborhood strategies. Do they work in tandem or do they not? So a consideration here is, you know, in this future condition, we have our daily high tides and, you know, we have coastal flood advisories and sometimes what's called by NOAA nuisance flooding, although it's not a nuisance to the people that it does affect. We acknowledge that. Today's environment, that happens about 4% of the high tides in a year, this nuisance flooding. We get to a three-foot sea level rise condition, it could happen up to 85% is what the data tells us. So, you know, a consideration there is, would you want the gate closed 85% of the time in that future condition or not? A lot of water quality concerns everything else. That stuff, that would be addressed by the Corps feasibility study. We haven't looked into it yet. Alternatives to that gate system would be that lower line of protection. The two areas, we looked at a bunch of different areas. Two areas that are included here are the backsides, baysides of east and west of the Lesnar. This is like, you know, seawalls with some small gates and gates at roadways and some of the waterways to maintain navigability. And adapted structures, again, the same kind of theme of let's, where we do new development or redevelopment, et cetera, focus in the high and dry areas, the SGA's. And if we, in the meantime, while we're considering, think about building these structures, if we want to move folks out of harm's way, there's definitely opportunities to elevate structures, to mitigate, reconstruct, or have acquisition to buy down that risk. Oceanfront watershed is smallest one, but not, certainly not least. Economic engine, as we talked about before, the Rudy Inlet is a gateway of flooding into the resort area. Here, natural kind of approaches include, again, similar theme of nourishing the shoreline, having that, you know, recreational beach, so important here in the resort area, so maintaining that line of protection. And then we look into the defense structures. We'd have the boardwalk as we know it today. There's a fence there now. We'd replace that with, the vision is, say, you could replace the fence with a seawall, you know, elevated one. Something like Ocean City, if you've been there, with swing gates at the walkways, that would maintain that level of protection. And then a gate at Rudy Inlet tying into, you know, a beach dune system on either side. Alternative to that, there's a neighborhood strategy here that looks at, you know, inside of Rudy Inlet, you know, one of the issues we're seeing with these, the future kind of conditions is you would get, you know, recurrent kind of flooding up into the south side of the resort area. So there's a seawall gate combination that could be looked at there to kind of mitigate those issues. Finally, we get to the Southern watershed. And certainly, last but not least, and this is one of the most complicated areas within the city, a variety of factors from the wind tides coming from North Carolina, the low-lined land, land use, everything else certainly make this challenging. One of our core themes here, just from looking at it and considering what the vulnerability is, land conservation and, you know, putting development out of harms way. Natural features, again, on the ocean shoreline, you know, nourishing the beach, raising it up, maintaining the line of protection to prevent overtopping. And marsh restoration is a key feature here within Back Bay. We can see from the historical record that the marshes in Back Bay are fragmenting, they're coming apart a little bit, they're declining. And some analysis we've done says, hey, if we work to restore some of these and put marsh back in, encourage SAV, we could slow down the floodwaters and maybe mitigate some of these wind tide scenarios. That's something that the feasibility, which needs to be explored further. On the defense structure side, we have three of the citywide alignments in the Southern watershed. One is on West Net Creek, which is just to prevent floodwaters from coming up in the middle of the city from the south. We'll kind of do them, we'll work around. We have a raised road, levee-like structure on Muddy Creek Road that connects into Sand Bridge Road, connecting back over to the backside of Sand Bridge, where we get to a system of structures, which would be seawalls and gates. The backside of Sand Bridge, I think, is a challenging proposition because we have all these navigable waterways and trying to, what do you do if you want to have protection and maintain people's access to the water, their use of their watercraft, why they bought those properties to begin with? And you get into an issue where if you want to, you can build a fringe wall everywhere, which is expensive, or if you have gates, then you have a lot of gates. It's a lot of points of potential failure, so that affects kind of the feasibility of that and some considerations there. If you can't do that, what can you do? You have to go back to site level mitigation or some of the lower-level strategies. Here, the two neighborhood strategies we examine here would be, you know, Muddy Creek Road, and it is a raised road, levee-like structure. It's hard to see on this map because I know it's busy. But coming up, you know, in a general, a little C word of the citywide one, it's a lower feature, it's much less expensive, and it ties into Sand Bridge Road and connects. And that would protect against some of the wind tide flooding, et cetera, but not the bigger storms. And it's a lower design level. Those neighborhood kind of features, too, can be initially designed to bring them, raise them in the future with an adaptive approach. And the other stuff looked at here and other areas, I think it's easier to see here, but where you see this kind of darker green and then the lighter green inside this area of protection, it's like using the site strategies inside the areas in lieu of building those structures or in combination with the structures to say, we're protecting these people, we can't go all the way down here. It's too cost prohibitive, there's not a lot. If we extended this further down, the constraints are, there's no high ground to tie into. So if you go down, you have to come all the way back up on the other side, so it's cost prohibitive. So what do you do about those folks that you didn't take care of with the strategy? Those are the kind of strategies you would use there. So with that, I think I'll turn it back over to Tony if there's questions at the end. Certainly here to answer those.
Okay, the path forward. So as Brian has alluded to, adaptation planning is going to be an ongoing process. All the plans that you see on this slide will need to align with the findings of this report. For example, the updated policies and zoning ordinances will need to be included in the city's update to the comp plan. The next update of the hazard mitigation plan, which will occur in 2022, will need to include the adaptation strategies identified in this report. We need to continue collaborating with the military regarding action items that were identified in the Norfolk-Virginia Beach-Jalou study. And impacts from sea level rise on the city's primary roadway system need to be incorporated into the city's master transportation plan as well as the regional transportation plan. And that kind of coincides with emergency operations planning. And of course, funding needs to continue to be identified for our capital improvement program as well as our operating budget. So the public engagement meeting schedule is shown here. We're going to have six meetings. They're all at the high schools and the elementary schools. They're going to be the same format that we did back in the summer. We're going to do a 15-minute presentation at the beginning, followed by breakout sessions at individual stations with the individual strategies. So next steps, we hope to get some input from city council between, hopefully by the end of February. We hope to go, we need to go to Planning Commission and back to council to adopt this And finally, I wanted to give an update on the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers feasibility study. So Brian mentioned this, this is how we will get the large citywide structures constructed. So it's referred to as a three-by-three-by-three coastal storm risk management study. This means it's supposed to take three years. It's supposed to cost $3 million. The city's share would be $1.5 million. And there's three levels of review by the Army Corps of Engineers. It's at the district level, the division level, as well as the headquarters level. So a year ago, in January of 2019, the city manager sent a letter to the Army Corps of Engineers, the local district, requesting a new start in appropriation of funds for this. In August, we submitted a Section 7001 application, which is another way to request an authorization. In September, Tom and Mark and Bob Mathias and our consultant, Doobury, who brought retired Major General Michael Walsh, traveled to the North Atlantic Division in New York, where they met with the regional programs director to garner support for this request. In October, letters were sent to senators and congressional leaders asking for support. In November, Tom and Phil went to headquarters in Washington, DC. And just last week, Tom sent a letter summarizing the meeting that they had in Washington, DC. And at this moment, we still have not heard whether we have received an appropriation for this. So we're looking for a new start, which would be an appropriation in the FY21 budget. Now, we do know the budget has been approved, but they have not included it in the work plan that we know of right now. Or we could possibly get what's called an emergency supplement, which would be a supplement to the FY20 budget that's currently in effect. So I wanted to kind of summarize what this feasibility study will get us. It's going to identify a preferred alternative. So we're going to take all the work that we've done, hand it over to the Corps, and they will use it to come up with a preferred project alternative. Again, this is the citywide level. It will get 10% design, so a concept-level design. They will complete the environmental impact statement and the NEPA document. And it will get a project authorization with a federal cost share of 65% for construction, so the city will have to come up with the rest of that. And that still will require appropriations. So that's where we are today. I will now open it up for discussion, and Brian can come back up.
Okay, Barbara, then John, then Rosemary.
Well, there's so much behind all of this. I mean, this is just, I mean, I know trying to do a document that is readable and understandable is very difficult, and trying to make a presentation of four years of study in less than an hour is a little difficult. But the amazing thing is just knowing how much is behind all of these charts and all of these maps and all of, I don't think there's a thing in here that doesn't have a whole lot of stuff behind it. Every sentence, every chart, every map, every color means something, and it's so action-packed. It's going to take a lot of going through it to understand what you all know is behind all of this. And I think the massive amount of work certainly ought to get us into the process with the Corps and anybody else because, and I think that's what I think is so important, that we, we have a lot of work ourselves to be able to get to the point of being able to deal with this as well as with the public and an ongoing education with all of us in everything that we do. I think our steps, and I know last year at this time, I was telling you how good I thought this policy report was. And of course, that has been worked with during the year and a lot of these things that we have to do just in our policies, such as changing the codes. Somebody mentioned that, having been out since last summer for review, and now we're back to that point. There are just so many different levels of what we need to do here and working with all of our plans to make all of us a part of it as well. We've got a lot to do, but it's good to know how much we have to work with because they have the data behind all of these statements and all of these maps and all of these charts and so forth. So it's knowing what all is behind all of these things that are in this report, you know, that is so important. And I think, I think you all did a phenomenal job of grasping what the city of Virginia Beach is. Because I think in reading this, the understanding of what we're trying to retrieve, achieve, who we are with our plans and so forth, you know, we have to keep all of that in mind as we're dealing with this whole issue of stormwater and sea level rise and so forth so that we get to do all these other things as well. But our challenge in looking at these four very different watersheds is pretty phenomenal. I think probably most cities maybe are all one watershed, but to have four extremely different watersheds, and I think you all did a really great job of breaking each of those down. And, you know, these maps showing the flooding pathways in each of these watersheds, and then even how they are interconnected, I really didn't realize quite as much as how they are interconnected, even though they're very different. And I think you all did a great job of outlining all of the things that we can do now for prevention, certainly the nature-based things we can do without waiting for $3 billion. So I think you all have given us a lot to work with, and I know we've got a lot more to continue to look at. I think you're still looking at some of the suggestions for the wind tide, maybe relief, if there is that possibility, in addition to marsh restoration. So we'll look for that as well. But I really do appreciate the background you've given us here to work with, and we've got a lot to do, but I think our staff has done a phenomenal job, as well as Doobury, in putting this together. And I know it's been a challenge, but thank you.
Thank you. John?
Just, first of all, this was a very good prime
Just first of all, this was a very good primer. But as you do know, Secretary Hsieh, they announced in the Federal Register for a 60-day comment, they're radically changing the timelines and the review processes for EISs and NEPA documents. So I hope when you get a chance to digest that, you can come back and tell us how much that will reduce our timeline. Because what I, my initial review of that is it will make a significant difference. I think at least a year could come off, and maybe more than that. So it will be good to make sure we fully leverage those and anticipate those changes, because I know the core will have to live with those.
Yeah, I'm sure the core would rapidly adapt to that.
And just as a technical correction, FY21 has not yet been submitted to the Hill. I think the president will be submitting that on February 10th, post the State of the Union message. So there is no FY21 appropriation at this point in time, and it won't be for a while. So I know you heard this, FY20 something was funded. It could be in the agency request. That's not the same thing as funded.
It's an authorization in 2020, I think, for an intended 21 appropriation.
And my other question, which has caught me by guard, at the completion of the study, it's automatically authorized? Or does it require a subsequent vote by the appropriate committees in Congress to actually authorize the project?
It's, do you want to?
Councilman Walsh, it is not appropriated at that point in time. It just means that they have reached this preferred alternative. We would have to go back and get a appropriation.
But you also have to get it off.
It gets approved for funding under the Water Resources Defense Authority Act, and then it gets an appropriation sometime afterwards in terms of all the other federal projects that could have appropriations.
My specific question, I know it's a nuanced one, but I'm just, I feel like I deal a lot with federal budgeting. So I'm just asking, does the enabling statute say that once this process is done, the project is considered automatically authorized? Or does it have to be included in the core submission, as they normally do, and get stuff authorized, and then later it gets appropriated? Those are two different functions.
I believe at the completion of the third level of review, and this three-by-three-by-three process was made to streamline some of these things within the Corps of Engineers, and Tom, I know you were at a lot of these meetings, so maybe, you know, differently. But my understanding is the chief of engineers, the assistant secretary, when they approve the study at the headquarters level, it's authorized to go on the Word of. And then it's a matter of appropriations. Now, that's a whole different story. It could take a long time, right? So.
I have a lot of questions, but I'm not going to ask more here today. But this is one I've talked about often, and we've never really, as this body comes to a conclusion, and certainly have not heard a diversity of opinions. This is on Slide 43. We talk a lot about capital improvement programming, but we have yet to have a thorough discussion on our overall acquisition strategy. That's not the same thing as capital improvement programming. Strategy comes way before that. And we haven't talked about our financing strategy, which should come long before the capital improvement program. And I really think those are planning processes. In fact, they make everything else possible. Because as the public's getting educated, an education without understanding the financial strategy and without acquisition strategy, you can't convey the executability of what you're showing. And that comes back to the point I repeatedly made. We've got to figure out some way at these public meetings to be able to visualize and to overlay these impacts and what these water flows look like on this GIS system, to show people visually how that watershed. As the water rises up, people can see how it looks and how it could look in 2040 if we did nothing. These are a very good port to read, but it's hard for people to, people today are visual learners. I mean, they really are. You see the maps, the simulation of the cars and everything. We've got to figure out some way to have a visualization tool to show people what this means. And I repeatedly mention that, but we're going to have to, because this gets back to my last point, will be when we talk about the risk, you know, the $26 million. I think we're going to have to say, obviously, as in $26 million every year, we'd have 26 times 20, that would be a lot of money. So there's a scenario that that $26 million represents, I assume.
Yeah, it's an average annualized loss value. So of course, you may not incur it every year. It could be a catastrophic loss one year and little ones in the years between.
Right. But I think when people are looking, and you're, when they see the word average, they're thinking, wait, we don't have that kind of storm. I think you have to talk about that that's averaging the exposure, but you're not, it doesn't convey the probability, the distribution of probability of those costs.
Yeah. I mean, that value comes from an analysis of looking at the individual events and their associated probabilities. So it's an output of that.
Right. But I just think that's an essential part of educating the public, because that's when they, because we're buying down risk, and you're right. But it's hard to read that report and know what risk you're buying down. Because I was talking to people at the Lynnhaven Colony City League on Saturday. We had a big discussion to let people know it's a $56 billion tax base, you know, that's underwrites all our bond debt, right? So if you said this probability was 10%, I'm not going to protect against a 20-foot storm surge and a hurricane, category four hurricane. I'm not building for that. So you come back and say, this is the catastrophic level of event that we're going to program for and be there by 2050, 2060, and this is the increment. I think we have to be able to communicate people the risk that we're buying down and how that translates to their neighborhood. I'm just, this isn't for all of your report, and there's not a bigger advocate for flooding than myself. But I also know how you have to get it down to communicate it so people can look at that individual neighborhood letter and understand what they're investing in for the community, that's the $56 billion, and what is it about, you know, my particular neighborhood. And I think if we're going to have a bond referendum, we've got to really be able to visualize what that is and what that time scale is so that people, we're being honest with them about when we're going, whenever we achieve victory. But when we look to get to that, this, the macro level catastrophic risk level we decide to buy down, and what part the private sector still owns. And they're going to decide to buy private insurance. They're going to decide to lift up their house. They have to do something. But the public isn't going to pay and can't pay to buy down 100% of that risk. And that's what I'm, I realize that wasn't the purpose of this report, but I'm more or less talking to staff, as I think as we move forward, that acquisition strategy, and I've told the city manager on numerous occasions, I believe our organic approach to doing everything organically is not responsive to the timeline we're on and doesn't represent best practice for dealing with large-scale capital projects.
Barbara?
But see, that's the thing. This is a very long-term thing. And I hope we won't go out now talking $3 billion. You know, this is a step-by-step thing. And those kinds of things, those levies and gates and so forth, we're talking about in the long term with the sea level rise issue. These more immediate things that we're talking about with the storm water, or what we're talking about in our CIP now. And so I hope we don't go out and scare everybody to death that we've got to come up with $3 billion. And if we don't do all of this next year, we haven't done anything. I mean, that's not the point. We're looking at a long-term sea level rise issue along with these other things. And it's very incremental, and things that we can very realistically do that help the situation in the meantime.
I concur. But here's the kicker. If you work with corporations, our own stock in big companies who do 20-year, 30-year strategic planning for energy exploration, they know what they're going to do in the near term. But they're very conscious of their long-term financial liabilities, because that informs what other liabilities they can't take on. And sometimes, if you're not going to do the big thing, you don't get a lot out of doing the little thing, you know? Because it gets back to that probability of risk. So if you're in for a penny, you're in for a pound. And I just think we need to understand what part of these pieces, if you don't move forward with the bigger pieces, don't buy, don't buy you protection against the most serious risk, which truly does what it did to Houston, did what it did to Gulfport, and set your whole city back 10, 20 years. That is a, you've got to understand that's the more existential threat is more the catastrophic, low probability, but high consequence. That you have to be mindful of, even when you're doing the smaller things. You can't, you've got to be honest with people so they see the big picture. And I think people are much more cognizant and much more aware of that. And I don't think they get scared by it. I think they're glad that you're being upfront and candid. No, you're not going to fix everything, but we've got a long way, multi-generational, multi-decade, major debt, continually significant debt to do to protect $56 billion plus of property tax, but more importantly, of quality of life we all like. And that's why I think it's, there isn't anything more important we're doing than this, because it is an existential threat. And we may have underestimated the acceleration.
We're overestimated.
What?
Or overestimated.
Less likely.
Things will change.
Less likely.
Anybody else? Rosemary?
Phenomenal report. And it's like our roadmap for the next how many years. You did an amazing job. I just had a little question, though. You talked about Ocean City, Maryland.
Yes.
And so they have floodgates?
The corollary there was just to the boardwalk and the oceanfront alignment. I'm not sure what slide it is. But, you know, the vision for the, you know, the boardwalk would be, and interestingly enough, it was in the original Army Corps design. There was a lot of pushback against it, because folks didn't want, you know, the view to be obstructed out to the ocean. But it would be, you know, where there's the iron fence now with the poles, in Ocean City, there's no fence there. There's a concrete wall that's about, you know, this high and a foot wide or so. And so it would be replacing the fence with that kind of wall. And then there's swing gates where the people walk down to the beach to close it off. So when the big storm comes, it protects the landward structures.
I've spent a lot of time in Ocean City. So how did they pay for all of that?
That was an Army Corps project, the flood wall. Yeah.
It was federal dollars?
It was, yeah, it's a federal cost share. But yeah, it's 65, 35 is what they say, but I don't know if it's always working out that way these days.
Like our boardwalk was. That was really interesting. I'm planning really go this summer. I'll have to check it out. Thank you.
Hey, anybody else? Guy, and then Michael.
Thank you for the work, years-long work that went into this report, both on the staff and Dooberry's side. I really can't keep up with it, even when I try. But you guys helped a lot with that. One of the questions that I have been asked, and I think you will be asked, and I'm asking it now, just not necessarily to get an answer now, but in preparation for the push to get what we need to get, is explain in words that the average taxpayer and citizen can understand. They read in the paper that Norfolk has got this project, this flood resilience project the council has sponsored. They read in the paper or watch on TV, and they see that the governor has announced this new commission and this budget amount for, which are large numbers, not large enough, we know, but large numbers for flood resistance. And of course, they understand that the core has a major impact of that. They don't understand how all that comes together. And I think having, I would appreciate having, it doesn't have to be lengthy, but it needs to be comprehensive enough to get the picture of how we are cooperating with our sister cities and states, perhaps, in terms of North Carolina, how we are working with the state government, how we and our localities are working with the state government, how all of that affects projects of the core that have the largest pocketbook in the deal. It would be very helpful to have a couple of pages that kind of laid out, where are we with that? Are we, show that we are aware of it, show that we understand the power of combining, because that's what people are really asking me about. Are we leveraging the fact that this is a classic problem with water? Everybody knows water goes where it wants to go. Classic problem of making sure you and your neighbors are, that are in the same watershed or that have the same problems, very similar ones, are working together to make this happen. I just think that would be a helpful addition, exhibit, add-on, and be, and discussion point in the future.
Michael?
I just want to associate myself with the compliments you received on this report and presentation. So thank you for that. My question, recognizing that the, this presentation is focused on the comprehensive sea level rise and recurrent flooding study and strategy, the big, real, real big picture. If I could, I'd like to go off script for just a moment and reference what I think Mrs. Henley talked about as some of the medium-term strategies. And while I've been trying to familiarize myself with the CIPs and some of the flood control projects that are in place, particularly in the center part of the city where I serve from, but really, really across the city, I've seen, and what I would categorize as many of these medium-term strategies, the flood control projects, some of which are funded partially, some of which are fully funded, some of which have not received any funding yet. I see a lot of engineered responses and, you know, what have been categorized here as some of those strategic, and I forget exactly what words you used. But anyhow, what I haven't seen, I guess, is the point is, is about the natural features. And correct me if I'm wrong, but the more that I speak with people in the community, and as this is a long-term problem, especially young people are really inquisitive about what natural responses we can incorporate into this. And I suspect you have the same experience in your public engagement. But I haven't seen those strategies, and I realize they're very well represented here, and I appreciate that very much. Where I haven't seen those strategies represented is in the CIPs. Do they exist there, or will they be incorporated?
So I'll comment on that. This year, in our proposed CIP, we are introducing, excuse me, a new project called Stormwater Green Infrastructure. Now, we did apply for what's termed a NIFWhif grant through-
How you spell that?
It's NIFWhif, but it's National Fish and Wildlife Federation. Unfortunately, we did not receive that grant. But we are still moving ahead, because the purpose of that CIP was originally to help fund some of these projects. But we're moving forward with that because we think the green infrastructure projects are important.
But I'm not wrong in that they haven't been presented to us yet.
Well, then, we have on the webpage, the natural and nature-based features documents. So each one of these things that were presented to you today, the citywide, the natural and nature-based, they were separate documents that were created, and they are on our webpage. The only one that's not-
It's part of the big picture.
We got those last summer. It was an individual document, but we presented that as part of the-
Last May, I think.
Those came out after the budget last year. So there was no chance, because they came out after the budget last year, there was no chance to create a CIP, because we didn't know what needed to be done at that point in time.
Okay. Part of them are response to the studies that have occurred.
Yes, sir. Now that, now that the report is complete, and we know where we can go look for doing these green infrastructure projects, that's why we've gone to create this CIP green infrastructure, CIP project this year, in this year's budget, to be able to start building off of what we've done with that.
The lack of them doesn't reflect a philosophical or ideological bias toward one solution or another. It's just simply that we weren't prepared to adopt them at that time. But we are more prepared now.
Yes. Now, the caveat to that is, you know, we'll be coming back to you with our CIP presentation, I believe, in March. That particular CIP, right now, is not set to receive any funding until FY22, I believe. So if we wanted to accelerate that, you know, obviously, council has a chance to weigh in on funding that in the first year of this CIP.
Well, I think part of the analysis is what impact do they have? I mean, that's certainly the principle.
Right.
And councilman, and at the right time and the right place, they will have an impact. In some cases, where you have a fully developed watershed, and maybe perhaps people say, well, if you go plant a few trees, our problems will be solved through green infrastructure. That's what I actually, some citizens and residents think, and that's not the case. Green infrastructure and stormwater prevention will often take a lot of the watershed in order to help that out. So it's not something that, it, I just don't want people to think that this is an easy solution, because if it was, we would already have been bringing it to you. So.
No, I don't think that. But I do think many, some people might. But I just do think it should be very much, and I'm glad, so glad to see that it is here, very much incorporated in the comprehensive plan. I don't see it, I don't see it as incorporated in the, some of, some of the more shorter term or medium term- in the, some of, some of the more shorter term or medium-term strategies, and I hope we'll be able to incorporate them as best we can.
For example-
Where they make sense.
Prince Sam Plaza is 100% developed and has no storage in it. So there, we're turning the lowest part of the property, which is the Bow Creek Golf Course-
Right.
-into a storage area. And in order, because you have to have someplace to store the water, yes, if you went and took a large part of the watershed, removed the homes, and replaced it with wooded forests, that would make a big difference. But it would require turning a lot of the watershed into a wooded forest.
Okay, anybody else? Barbara?
The comment, but, and you all mentioned, and here's one of your many things. The Corps of Engineers is actually doing a SAV replacement project now in, in Broad Bay, which I think is phenomenal. I think it was their only new start program anywhere in the country last year. But what they learn from that, you know, can be transferred to a lot of places. But there are things going on. And, and, and like I say, that's a core project. It's kind of amazing.
Louis?
This is an outstanding presentation. First, let me, let me say that. I think it's probably, as we, every time we have a presentation, the next one's better than the last one. So this is great. And you've laid out a very good framework of what we need to do in order to deal with the sea level rise issue. What you, maybe I've missed it, but I'm not sure whether I see in this what you prioritize as the, as the step-by-step actions that you need to take in order to achieve, you know, successful culmination of the projects that are in the presentation, and what the fiscal impact year by year that, that they're going to be, is going to be. And the reason I ask that question is because I allude to what Mr. Moss brought up, and that is, is that we're going to have, we're going to be dealing with some major financial bonding issues in the next few years. And we need to decide what we're going to use that bonding capacity for, because there's going to be some things that we would like to do that we're not going to be able to do because of our debt service level and our, and our, and our credit rating. And so, have you done that?
No, we do not have a step-by-step priority for these sea level rise adaptation strategies. What we, we are working on with our master, Stormwater Master Plan, is those are the projects that are going to be identified through the modeling that we've completed last year. And that's going to be per watershed, and we're having those projects right now being prioritized by one of our consultants. So that piece of, but those are not sea level rise projects. Those are stormwater projects.
But my, my concern is as we embark upon the budget process this year, and in the next, subsequent, next few years, we've got to identify what it is we're going, which of these goals we're going to prioritize, do first, second, third, and fourth, and make a plan within our debt service levels to do that. And we're going to have to stick to it or we're not going to win.
That is, you are so right, Mr. Jones.
That's just my, my thoughts and suggestions, Steve.
Barbara?
He's always spot on.
I hate to keep monopolizing, but I thought along the way, we had sort of been under the impression that maybe some of this work was going to be accepted by the Corps as a part of that three-by-three-by-three. Are we going to have to start from the very beginning and have another three-year study? I mean, that's going to, in order to be able to get the 65%, the federal participation, because that's going to be big. We certainly can't fund this by ourselves.
Well, the Army Corps is, that, that is their process. So unfortunately, we can't dictate to the Army Corps of Engineers how long it's going to take them to do this feasibility study. We're going to give them everything we've already done. We've already met with them, gone over a lot of the technical information that we have. And they said it's going to make their process easier, but I don't think I've heard that they're going to reduce the time on the amount of the study.
They've told us they cannot reduce the time on the study, but they can take everything we've done as a, in lieu of payment instead of giving them one and a half million dollars. If we give them a million dollars worth of information, we only have to pay the half a million dollars for the study. So there is, that is all part of agreement that has to be worked out once an authorization has been granted by Congress.
But those new federal rules going to affect that timeline will be shortened. The question, the question is begged sometimes, well, why didn't we just apply for a three-by-three, four, five years ago and, and forget about us spending our money in the study? If the Corps had granted us a three-by-three, by-three authorization, they would have been only able, given all the things they have to do, to have looked at a small portion of Virginia Beach. They were, maybe perhaps just the Lynn Haven watershed. They will take our work, and then they will take, they would never have been able to do everything that Dewberry's done for the citywide and then put that into, complete that in a single three-by-three-by-three study. So our work is going to work with that together, and we're going to get our, we're going to get our value out of it. We're hoping that we may hear something next month on our entry into this process. So.
Mr. Jones' comment, just to give an example of why I think the financing strategy and the acquisition strategy is so important. You could decide to issue $431 million of debt at over a 20-year period, which we generally do, level principal payments, variable interest payments, about 25 to 35 basis points of the 10-year treasury note. At the same token, you could decide, because of fiscal bond limitations, you could decide to issue your debt for a shorter period of time, get probably closer to 15%, or you actually get the treasury 10-year note, pay it off faster, but double the investment in the same period of time and accomplish twice the work at a slightly higher capital cost, but less long-term impact on your total bonding capacity. And that's why this discussion about the financing strategy, which we have really spent no time on as a body, which involves really people of better sophistication than myself out of Wall Street to give you what these kind of options are. And then if you do your acquisition strategy, promote and treat these as big, huge projects like Saudi Arabia's doing, they're going to build a city from scratch, five and forty square miles in the desert. That's a pretty big job, I think. But do you go out and do Malt and award the thing as a 10-years' worth of work, A&E work, and then you front-load all the A&E studies and do it in environmental, and then go to execution? There's a lot of things about how you scale this that reduces your total cost. It's mobilization, demobilization, stability of workforce. These are all fundamental things on a strategy point of view that change the value of output you get relative to admin and overhead that doesn't do anything except manage stuff. I mean, this is why I think this discussion is so worthwhile, because the payoff of it is so great. And I just think we haven't really thought, because we, not saying that people aren't thinking that themselves, but we haven't sat down and discussed that aspect. And I know I've written a number of emails to both the mayor and the city manager in this regard, but I think we're missing an opportunity if we don't think in a bigger scheme than the one-year execution of the budget. We, because I think that's what the public is looking for, the larger vision. I don't know what the right answer is. I'm just showing that as an example of how you can change the amount of work you do and get more done, because in the end, we're all about what? Trying to deliver within affordability the most risk reduction that we can. And I just think we, we got to have that discussion.
I agree. All right. Thank you for really taking on this problem aggressively and coming up with some incredibly good stuff. How about a five-minute break?
Welcome, Chief Seaver.
Mayor, members of council. We're going to talk about a proposed ordinance for erecting tents on our beach. Current city code right now prohibits sleeping on our beaches from 8:00 PM until 8:00 AM. Main reason is for public safety, and that is for cleaning of the beaches. This, this ordinance that we want to put forward for tents really will enforce the sleeping on the beach ordinance. Right now, we do know, and I know that you had a conversation last week with the city attorney, referenced a decision that came out of the Ninth Circuit Court. Yes, I know we're the Fourth Circuit Court, but when, when a circuit court makes a decision, everybody stands up and listens. And we know that there's certain things about sleeping in public. What we would like to do is talk about this type of an ordinance, which would really assist us in the sleeping on the beach ordinance. But I do want you to know first, first and foremost, that what we're going to talk about, and a lot of the conversation really delved into the homeless issue. I believe someone said you're going to make homeless people criminals. That's not the intent of the police department. What we want to do is give voluntary compliance for everything we do. To be honest, we don't want to arrest folks who are sleeping or happen to be on a tent on the beach. We just want to be able to fix the problem as quickly as we possibly can. However, if we do want to then associate this with homelessness, that's a large, complex social problem. There's a number of intersecting variables that have to deal with that. And I know that Mr. Friedman and his staff have been working extensively. There are housing issues. There are substance abuse issues. There's mental health issues. There are health issues. There are a number of issues that intersect with a homeless individual. So what we're looking at is maybe an acute answer, small. This is not an answer to fix the problem. It is just to assist the police in assisting the other agencies when they deal with individuals who happen- who happen to be homeless. In other words, this isn't going to fix any problem that we have when we deal with homeless. As a matter of fact, I just came back from a meeting with major city chiefs. We devoted two hours to this very topic, and around the country, the issue is growing. We originally envisioned looking at a Class II misdemeanor. The reason why is our sister cities have the same ordinance. We copied their ordinance, and in Norfolk, it's a Class II. In Chesapeake, it's a Class I. We looked at this to say, what can we possibly do when it comes to incentivizing an individual to cease the behavior so that we do not have to take action? And a Class II means that there is an arrest to be made. I know that one citizen was a little upset, saying the police may destroy the tents or things like that. You know that's not going to happen. You know we don't do that. We don't do that for anybody's personal property. One of the things, though, that this ordinance will do, we're hoping, is incentivize an individual for voluntary compliance. We seek voluntary compliance on just about all of our lower-level criminal violations that are out there. As I said, Chesapeake, it's a Class I misdemeanor. Norfolk's a Class II misdemeanor. What we are going to propose is a Class IV misdemeanor for erecting a tent on our beaches. Now, there is a caveat to this. It is mainly a fine, up to $250, plus court costs, and your court costs are rather steep for a number of reasons. So one has to look and say, if an individual happens to be homeless, what makes you think they're going to pay a fine to the court? I share your body language there. That's probably not going to happen. If it doesn't happen, then other things will take place, and then we kind of have a cycle. So what we would like to do is use this to the best of our ability to get voluntary compliance, and then hopefully to interact with our colleagues in housing, in mental health, social services, the Health Department, and see if we then can maybe get someone out of the cycle. And we know that's not going to be perfect all the time, but we are at least wanting you to know that as a police department, we understand wholeheartedly that we are the organization of first resort when it comes to complex social issues, and we're here to try and assist citizens who are in a different place than we are. One way we think we could do it is through this tent ordinance. The other piece to this is, without a tent ordinance, what's to say that everyone who puts a tent up at our beachfront, especially in the summertime, is homeless? It could just be the, you know, beachfront property that's free. Do we have any questions?
Any questions?
Sir.
Okay, Michael and Jess.
Can you help educate me about what is a Class IV misdemeanor exactly?
It's the lowest form of misdemeanor that we have. It's not punishable by any jail time.
It's not punishable by jail time.
That's correct. It's up to a $250 fine.
And so, I guess, you know, I've really been thinking a lot about this discussion, and also about how it fits into the discussion about homelessness in Virginia Beach more broadly. But for the purposes of this discussion, really, I've tried to zero in on tents on the beach. And the conclusion that I've made is that having tents on the beach where people are living in them effectively is not compatible with our resort.
Correct.
And I think most people share that view. And it would make Virginia Beach not a desirable location for people to choose to spend their hard-earned income to vacation. And that's such an important part of our economy, quality of life in Virginia Beach. So, you know, that's why I made that conclusion, that it's incompatible. So where I'm going with this is, if it's a Class IV misdemeanor that's punishable by fine, what is the actual, on-the-ground impact of that in terms of your field, in terms of the work you do? In other words, if a police officer approaches, worst-case scenario, police officer approaches a person who is homeless, who's living, who has chosen to set up their tent in the middle of the resort, and that person says, okay, give me the ticket, and go about your business, right?
No, then they have to cease the activity.
Oh, they do?
If we don't want to cease the activity, then we'll go to a whole different place that we can then enforce.
Can you tell us what that looks like?
That would be to tell somebody, now we're going to pack up your belongings, and you're going to leave this particular area. If not, we could go to Instruction of Justice, we could go to a number of other areas. What we want to do is avoid most of that. And if we have an ordinance, at least which gives us the statutory authority to interact with someone, our cops are pretty good at getting voluntary compliance. And I think we'll be able to get most of the voluntary compliance that we need.
But in the cases where you can't, where work gets out on the street, you're saying there's no, nothing that impedes the police department from taking the, whatever necessary, you know, not whatever necessary, but from removing the tent from the beach?
Well, we will then, if the person is continually violating the ordinance in front of us, then what we will do is we will then remove him and his tent from the beach. What we don't want to do is get into a situation where it's not an individual, but we have, quote, "the encampments." As I speak to my colleagues around the country, when they have the encampments, is when it becomes very problematic.
Isn't it true that there's encampments to some form or fashion underneath the pier at times?
There have been anywhere from five tents to one tent, and our, again, our officers work very, how do I explain it? After a while, you kind of get to know everybody. So once you start to interact with the same individual, they do, believe it or not, form a social relationship. And once we have the ordinance, it will go to that other place to say, we need to clean this up, you need to take it somewhere else. Now, someone had asked me, so what about the rest of the city? And I think we're going to cross that bridge at a future time, once we begin to work out some of the nuances of that Ninth Circuit Court decision.
Yeah, and I think that's where our more compassionate side will come into play, where we try to connect people with services, where we find areas where we can accommodate people who are homeless more compassionately.
Yes, sir.
But at the resort, it's particularly difficult. But anyway, I don't know why I was under the impression that without a jailable offense, you wouldn't be able to compel them to remove the tent. But I guess I was wrong.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Who's next? Jess?
Thank you. I'm very, I was really happy to hear you say that the plan is to have a whole holistic approach to how we address these individuals. Obviously, I'll speak for myself, I was not worried about people who were just deciding to erect a tent and camp on the beach because it was convenient and inexpensive or free for them to do so. But more concerned about that cycle you talked about on, you know, okay, now I've become a formal criminal, I've had jail time, I'm going to get out eventually, then I've got all these other things that I'm dealing with and all the costs that incur going through that process. So you said that the goal is to have some kind of formalized plan with the relationships of the services that the city offers and the state offers. Is there any type of formalized plan yet?
Mr. Friedman will discuss that. Actually, there is, they have a robust program. Eventually, we're going to have to increase that, we're going to have to enhance it, and I know that we always have competing interests, but that's going to be one, I think, that's going to bubble up as we mature more as a city, just like some other issues will be there as we mature as a city. And again, I can't express how important it is, when I speak to my colleagues from other cities like Seattle, like Los Angeles, San Diego, and I see where they started or where they are today, maybe we can take some of the things that have worked. Washington DC has a very in-depth program with multiple city departments, just like our Housing Department does, so we will probably, again, reach out to DC.
Well, and I appreciate all that, and I think, I mean, being, having visited places like Portland, where you can erect a tent or just lay down on the ground anywhere, I can understand the concern, not only for the general public, but the individuals themselves having basically no standard of living. As far as the way the police officer interacts with these individuals, it still kind of remains their discretion as whether citation is necessary. So we're not going to see.
Right, no. And the precinct captain is here. She's been excellent at seeking voluntary, on a number, there was a time, if I may, when I was the precinct captain, it was, we won zero tolerance. I remember hearing that from a number of the resort businesses, and we said, we're never going to go to zero tolerance. That is not what a police department should be doing. We want to fix the problem, a minor problem, before it becomes a major issue. And some of the issues that we have with the individuals is they become victims of crime. They become perpetrators of crime. And sometimes it's just the behavior that leads to criminal activity.
Okay, anybody else? Thank you. Appreciate your effort on this. Thank you. Andy, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thanks for the opportunity to be here. I want to say a couple of things about the briefing itself. One, to put it all in context, is I think you, as council members, deserve a great deal of credit for the funding, policy, and actions you've taken over the last five years, major support for our community-wide effort. And we get the chance to discuss what we have here in Virginia Beach with people around the state. They come to visit the Housing Resource Center. They're extremely impressed by it. They're jealous of what we have, and so all the credit to the council for investing in a really great enhancement to this community system we have. I'm just doing information today, there's no policy or funding recommendations here, but really in response to your recent conversations. We did make some minor changes to the presentation you received over the weekend, so I think you have a new copy there. And I want to point out with me today are the staff members who make everything happen, Ruth Hill, our administrator, and Pam Shine, our services manager. Thank you, guys. So we want to make homelessness rare, brief, and nonrecurring. We want to talk about all these things in a very short period of time, so I'll be quick. We want to help homeless people obtain housing. That's different from helping the homeless. There's a lot of ways you can help the homeless survive on the street, and some of those are very important. We've had our Community Winter Shelter Program for many years. It helps people avoid dying on the street. We think that's really important. But our overall goal is not to help you be homeless, but to help you get housed. Part of that is expanding affordable housing opportunities, and part of it is, and what we do all the time, is working with stakeholders, both to get people housed and to get, address the impacts of homelessness, which can be unfortunate. It's important to understand there are some things that cause homelessness that we, as a city government, don't impact. The national economy, the employment rate, federal policies, the wages that people earn are really important factors. But other things, including things that Police Chief mentioned, people need critical social services. I think Virginia Beach has done a lot to enhance access to social services, affordable housing, how effectively our system helps people get from homelessness into housing, and we've made great strides in that area. And also, do we have the funding we need to address those? There are a lot of reasons why people become homeless. I've said before, homelessness as a term obscures more than it really reveals. People can be homeless for reasons such as family breakup, domestic violence, or any major financial stress, or they can lack the support or connections to help them resolve it by themselves. Even so, most people who become homeless resolve it by themselves and never come to our attention. Another critical piece of information is that the number of people who are homeless is always changing. There's not just a group of people who we can house and be done with the problem. People, all these causes are not preventable by us, and so people become homeless or have a housing crisis, many resolve it on their own. But people can be homeless for short or long periods of time. So what can we do? And these are the things we are doing. We want to get the best possible understanding of our community needs through data and with communication with stakeholders. So we are really enhancing our understanding through data and analysis, and we are part of a regional information system that is very powerful and we can use to do that. We want to promote strategies that address the affordable housing supply, improve our system, develop new resources, a key part of what we're constantly doing. Later this, in February, I'll be coming to you for appropriations of new resources that we have sought and obtained to help address this issue. And collaboration is key. As you're going to see, we are part of a community system that's very large. We want to prevent homelessness, shorten the length of time that people experience it, and as I said, get them into housing. So how many people are homeless, which is not the exact right question to ask, but people come in and out of the system, and we have various ways to try to understand it. One is the nationally consistent way of the January Point in Time Count, which is going to happen next week. We have the Annual Point in Time Count. It's a one-day population snapshot. You can see we've had a steady decline, except for a tiny little blip last year. That's great. We're lower, we're nearly half of what our highest number was. This is great. We want to continue or maintain this, and so that's one way we can understand homelessness. Another way is that how many people came to our system and said, I'm homeless, and we validated they are literally homeless, and that was 1,224. Three-quarters of them were single homeless adults, 16% members of family, and 7% youth. Another way, and this is slightly, it is significantly different, is the people in Virginia Beach school system are part of Project Hope, which helps students who don't have a regular fixed place to sleep. Most of them, if not all of them, are not literally homeless, but they're doubled up with a family member or with someone, a friend, or they're moving from place to place, or they're in a motel. So not a stable place to live, but not-on-the-street homeless. That number unfortunately has continued to climb. I wish I could tell you that we know why that is, but it is happening. The national trend in homelessness, and I want to point out that a couple of years ago, in 2017, we had an intern who did this study for us, did this research of what was happening back then. So we haven't been able to update it to this year's numbers. This is as 2017. Nationally, we've seen a decline in homelessness, except for a slight uptick, and that uptick has actually continued in 2018 and 19, but almost all of it is due to California. Almost all the states, except California, have been decreasing homelessness. California has not. We are part of a group of cities who have shown a decline in our homeless rate on the right. So Charlotte, Houston, Virginia Beach, and the national average have all shown a decline. But New York City, along with Seattle and Los Angeles, have shown an increase, and we are definitely want to stay on the right side of the chart, continuing with a decrease or stable trend. We have a low rate of homelessness per 10,000 people. We're at the bottom of the chart at 5.77 persons per 10,000. We compare favorably with our local neighbors, as well as our regional in Richmond, and with other coastal cities as well.
Your pleasure.
And we've been going down in that rate. Just real quick on some of the national models, Charlotte, North Carolina dramatically increased their permanent housing and saw a significant continuing decline in homelessness for seven years. New Orleans also saw a significant decline in homelessness. We're not exactly, if you ask me why, I can't really tell you. We can tell you what things did, but understanding a causal link and all the other factors that present are very, very difficult. And Houston, actually, they made a big change in their services system, which we have done as well, so that it's more effective in getting the people who are literally homeless into housing, and they saw a significant decline. And so did Atlanta. One thing Atlanta did is build more, so affordable housing is one thing, but many of the people who are chronically homeless, who have various issues, need what we call permanent supportive housing, which is housing with support services that help people, once they get housed, to overcome the issues that made them homeless in the first place. This is something that Atlanta did. So a little bit then about our own community system. We have had a community model of helping the homeless for more than 30 years. In 2009, we formalized it, called the Beach Community Partnership. Over 30 agencies coming together. This council adopted our community plan called Community of One in 2017 that has a comprehensive approach to all the things we think are necessary to do this. I'm not going to, you don't need to look at all these, but I guarantee each of you knows more than one organization on here. They're all part of our community system, and we meet regularly, and all the agencies collaborate voluntarily on those things they want to work on that are consistent. collaborate voluntarily on those things they want to work on that are consistent with their mission and goals. So we don't command the system. It's not possible. We don't want to, but we coordinate and move it forward. This is kind of a chart of our system. We have federal, state, and city money coming into our system. We have city, state, and nonprofit service providers as actors. We have a governing board that's required by HUD that makes actual funding decisions about where some of the federal money goes. And all together, we do program and service delivery. Our role is coordination, resource development, which other agencies do as well, monitoring the system with our data. We also operate at the Housing Resource Team, our Housing Crisis and Stabilization Team, which is homeless prevention and diversion and assessment. We are the outreach team, which is a critical part of dealing with panhandling and people on the street. And of course, Ruth and her staff manage the Housing Resource Center. We are part of a regional system. We've been part of a regional system since 2005. It's very effective because we've been able to share the costs of things like building 400 new units of permanent housing, having one regional crisis hotline instead of six cities having hotlines, having one homeless management information center instead of six. And we did major progress on veteran homelessness in partnership with the state and the VA in 2015. And we still think we're at functional end to veteran homelessness, which means as a veteran is identified in our system, they should be able to be housed within 60 to 90 days. And that's specifically because the federal government made available additional special resources for veterans, and because we collaborated extensively with the state, the region, and the VA. So we practice a Housing First philosophy, which says that having a stable place to live is the critical platform from which people can address all the additional steps to keep their lives stable. This is really the approach that is promoted by HUD and all the best-practice trainers in the country. We think we have a streamlined system. We're going to show you a little bit of that. But the main way to access the system is to call our regional hotline number. We have a standardized set of questions to assess people, and we have a common set of performance measures that we use to determine, and HUD uses to determine, the extent to which we can get funded and how successful we're being. A very coordinated system where people meet daily and weekly to figure out who can be housed and where. And we're integrated. We have no wrong door. It doesn't matter who you ask, you're going to get into the place you need to get. It used to be spaghetti. It's not spaghetti anymore. You call the hotline, or you come to the Housing Resource Center, or you interact with our outreach team, and you get into the system. You're assessed, and then you refer to the housing and services that are available. This does not mean that everyone who gets into the system gets housed. That's a really difficult thing. It does mean that the most vulnerable people, because we do, we do triage, the most vulnerable people get housed. Here's how you get out of homelessness. As I said, one of these, these three paths to our team. Either we can divert you. Diversion means we're going to find a family member who actually says, "Yes, I will house them," or we're going to place you in a shelter, placed in housing, or placed on the waiting list. And there definitely are people on the waiting list. What's the Housing Resource Center part of this? This is a major enhancement and transformation of our system, but it is not the whole system. We have, as I said, all those 30 agencies working with us, and there's shelters in different places and housing services in different cases. But it put everything together in one place, which is one of the concepts you embraced many years ago. We integrated our services, including with the Department of Human Services, and we have increased capacity because we have new family shelter, new apartments, new health care available. So this is integrated services, whether you come to us, the front door, you come to Human Services, you go to our day service center, which is where people who are still homeless on the street come, or you come to the health center. You're assessed on a standard set of assessments, and you get services at that entry point, as well as referral to everything else. So we wanted to highlight some of the things that we did as a result of the creation of the Housing Resource Center. And so, 32 people, you recall, there are 30 apartments at the Housing Resource Center that are permanent housing. 32 people got permanent housing in the Housing Resource Center as a result. That means 32 people, their homelessness has been ended. 39 families were sheltered. That means 39 families had either one or more nights not on the street. They weren't, this is not housing now. This is temporary shelter while we find them housing. So we have only 10 rooms for families at the HRC. So you can see they're turning over about four times a year to get 39 families sheltered. 248 single adults sheltered at the HRC. That means they had one or more nights of shelter. They were not on the street during those nights. They were not putting a tent up on the beach during those nights. And 227 households, this is really significant, were assisted, so they never became homeless in the first place. This could be rent or utility or other assistance. So what people who are in danger of losing their housing did not lose it. And that is incredibly valuable, because once you become homeless, then you have a much bigger hill to climb. You lose your possessions, your ID, and it's much worse. And 869 adults, this is probably another way to try and understand the scope of homelessness. 869 different adults accessed day services, which means sometime during the year, they were a person who did not have shelter, did not have housing, and came to the day service center. And then, this is a great new benefit of the Housing Resource Center. As a result of the building of the clinic and the resource center, all outside funding from the federal government and from the Hampton Roads.
Community Foundation.
Community Foundation, thank you. Provided 454 patients with primary care health services, no cost to the city, except that the utilities, we're paying the utilities, that's it. So that's a great benefit. And we also want to point out a key partnership, and Ms. Abbott was asking about that, Human Services. Human Services has offices on the third floor. People who come in and need those services are instantly referred. 412 households were connected to the public assistance programs that are available. 237 households connected to employment services, and 131 connected to mental health or substance. So we are integrated. When people come in and get assessed, they get that immediate referral. 37,000 meals were served to shelter and day services participants. It is not a community feeding place. Only if you're in the shelter or at day services do you get meals. We do have challenges. I don't want to portray this as we've solved everything, but there's more people accessing the system than are literally homeless. There are many people with housing prices that can't be helped, even beyond the people who we prevent. Then there's more literally homeless than are eligible for assistance in the various programs we operate. And then, there are more people eligible for assistance that can be housed. So we have not said everyone can get housed in Virginia Beach, and we will never say that, but our goal is to do more and more and get closer and closer to housing, everyone. We do have some shelter capacity challenges, so the key point up there, at any point, about 80 households are presenting as unsheltered during the year. So if you go to winter shelter tonight, you will see anywhere from 60 to 80 individuals who are currently unsheltered. We don't have the capacity to shelter everybody every night, and that is also a difficult thing to achieve. So this is a chart showing the 1,224 households that were literally homeless when they presented. Of those 1,224, 492 or 40% got housed. About a little less than half of those got housed with our assistance, and the rest of them in the blue, 297, housed themselves. But they came into our system, we assess them, they house themselves. But the rest are, the red is, we lost contact with them. And this is one of the big problems of being homeless. Lose your phone, lose contact, very transient, went to Norfolk, whatever. Also, we have 253 people, when we did this analysis, on the waiting list for housing. So this is the unmet need at any given time, is that number. And then, 53, we lost track of one way or another, unable to assist. We have eligibility limitations, as I mentioned. Most of our money is federal and state, but you have provided significant local resources that have made a big difference to us. And that's how we're doing our prevention and diversion, along with the funds from Bevy Home Now. Absolutely, there is personal choice. And one of our big challenges that we do in homelessness is our outreach team continually engages those people long-term on the street, because people sometimes don't make a choice or unable to make that choice. And those are some of the people that the police department interacts with regularly. We are doing landlord recruitment to help get landlords who accept persons actually right off the street into housing with our financial assistance. Our department, not homeless services, but we're developing affordable housing opportunities and be happy to come back at another time and talk about that. As I mentioned, resource development and system improvements, finding better ways to help people, and doing more data analysis to find the keys to what we can do best. We are addressing community concerns that we know you are aware of, that people are sleeping in multiple places at the resort area. The tents on the beach was just discussed. Address aggressive panhandling, which we've been working with Ms. Wooton on, on some ideas to address that. Ongoing dialogue, both in the HRC area and the resort. We're going to increase our outreach and engagement at the oceanfront, because more outreach engagement means more possibility of getting people into services. And we'll be working on the ways to address panhandling. As I said, Ms. Wooton had asked us to look at that. We did two surveys of panhandlers. Both of them found about, they're not scientific, but the surveys we did found that about 30 to 40% of the panhandlers are not homeless, but panhandling is the way they keep themselves housed. And they're doing, some of them are doing reasonably well at it. Public education, signage options, survey of businesses on how that's impacting them. And we have the donation meter program. We're going to look at business, community engagement, so we all can provide a similar message. So all those are being looked at. We have things going on right now. We're doing a public survey, seeking input on locations where people are unsheltered, so we can go and count them. We're doing a public survey on our housing and neighborhood preservation needs. We're doing an employment workshop in coordination with the Human Services. And next Thursday, we'll be doing the Point-in-Time Count and Project Homeless Connect, which outreaches to people, counts them, and connects them to services as possible. So I'd just say, as the Police Chief said, it's a complex issue. There's not one number. People go in and out of homelessness. We need to meet those needs of the people we actually see. And capacity and funding challenge will probably always be there. We've had a longstanding city and community commitment. We're making progress. I think our Point-in-Time Count chart is really good news, and we want to keep it that way. And there's still some more work to do. I'd ask the mayor for guidance, whether he wants me to talk briefly on affordable housing. The main thing I want to say is you're a housing advisory board with Ms. Wilson as a member, Ms. Wooton is attending, is working on that issue and plans to meet, have strategy recommendations, talk with the Planning Commission, and have those discussions with council in the future. And I'd be happy to answer your questions at this time.
I appreciate it. Jess.
On slide nine and 10, can you help me understand some of this data, particularly with the students? Are we counting students as only individuals under the age of 18, or is it any student at college level or?
These are just students in Virginia Beach City public schools. Just the school-aged students.
Okay. And then, well, that answers my other question. On the slide 10, have, is there any, I guess, data that's taught, that can, that, I guess, maybe cross-references the number of families that are now living with multi-generations in their homes? And is that helping to reduce these numbers and really not, maybe not adequately representing how many people are unable to actually live independent of, say, their parents, or their parents are unable to live independently of their children or some other relative that maybe, you know, because it seems in the independent research I've done, that there is a increase in multi-generation households than there has been in the past. So, I mean, do we have any insight? Is there any insight on how, I mean, I realize this is a national number, but maybe how that's impacting us or?
I really don't have that. You know, that's kind of a whole different issue, because it's likely that those families are stably housed, even though they are multi-generational. So they're not showing up in any of this information.
And then, for the affordable housing discussion that's going on, is that group working on our policy in terms of how we're building affordable housing, or is it strictly working on how we acquire more affordable housing?
I would say everything. How we subsidize it, how we build it, and how we allow it to become through development and zoning and other regulations.
So I presume that there'll be a recommendation in terms of how we allow zoning in certain areas and ways we can, you know, facilitate more stability in the housing market? Is that a fair?
Yes.
Okay. And then, in the Point-in-Time Count, how can, are you all still recruiting volunteers or is that?
We would love to have you come to our training.
I would love to come, but I was more saying, anybody who's watching, if they, are you still in need of people to help?
No, we, go ahead.
We have a training tomorrow evening. If people, and we've already closed the registration, but if somebody shows up for training, I'm sure we can open it. But they have to come to training from 6:30 to 8:00 a.m. at the HRC tomorrow evening.
Thanks, Ruth.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Michael, then John.
Thanks, Mr. Friedman. We had a chance to speak before the presentation began, and I was, I told you how much I appreciated this presentation. And actually, preparing for the meeting, you answered all the questions that I had going into it, just with the information that was presented here, and I really appreciate it. And I had a chance to spend some time with you and the mayor a few weeks ago at the vigil to memorialize individuals in our community who lost their lives in the last year while living homeless. And I think one of the takeaways that I had about that event, which was really impactful to me, and I suspect the mayor would agree, was that there is a community of people who live in Virginia Beach. And I think sometimes when people, when we think of homelessness, we think of transient community or people who aren't, you know, ongoing members of our community. And I think what, for me, what struck me about that event, where people who lost their lives were memorialized by people who cared about them, was that there is a community of people who are living homeless in Virginia Beach and stay here. They're not only coming from other communities and coming in and out. And that's one, I think, misconception that exists about homelessness in Virginia Beach. And so I think it's worthwhile to invest in innovative strategies to, you know, to address the issue. But I do have a few specific questions. On slide seven, and I think you made some note of this in your presentation, but there appears to be a, I think you sort of referred to it as a sort of an anomaly or an uptick. Do you have any idea what that, what's the cause of that, or if that is reflective of a new trend?
We don't think it's a trend. We had a change in the availability of shelter for families from 2017 to 2019. Some were eliminated and some were added. And having that shelter means that families were easier to find and populated there. So we'll have to see. We're, you know, we'll be out there next week, counting all the shelters on the street places. I think it's an anomaly of those program changes and hopefully not a trend.
Because it, well, the years are different, but it looks like there's a sort of a similar slight uptick in the national homeless trend, but the years are a little different.
Right. Yeah, there definitely is, but, and we just saw some national data that basically emphasized what I told you. Nationally, things are going down, except in California. And that's really, that's where the real focus, they have some real problems.
They have some real problems over there. That include, what was really concerning to me is some of the public health problems that exist as a result, which is why it's incumbent upon us to... that exist as a result, which is why it's incumbent upon us to be as comprehensive in our response as we can, if for no other reason to avoid those public health concerns, which are really, really scary. One of the things that you mentioned was something called Project Hope, and I just would like to have, take this chance to bring, to bring out a program that I think a lot of people may not be aware of. And that is that students who are living homeless can go to school in a taxi. Could you talk about that a little bit? Because I'm not sure a lot of people are aware of that program, and how much it really does to change the trajectory of a student's life who's experiencing homelessness.
Yes, sir. So, I'm not an expert, but we work closely with the City Public Schools Social Work Office, which runs Project Hope, which provides services to students in the categories that I mentioned. And they, one of the key findings was that school stability is fundamental to school success, and so people are able to attend their home school through transportation options. You will see the Virginia Beach City School Bus come to the Housing Resource Center, pick up children who are sheltered there, and take them to their home school, and you will also see private drivers taking them. So, they, those people are also connected to Project Hope in the Housing Resource Center, and they provide homework help and other things to all the students in that category.
It's a really great program. That's a partnership, public-private partnership, and one that's, and I think that's really great, and I don't know if other communities...
It's a federal requirement.
Oh, it is.
How they implement it, but it is a federal requirement. I forget the expression for the act, but there's a statutory regulatory requirement.
It's really good. And then, my final question relates to, I think was referred to as panhandling here. Having grown up here, one of the things that I've noticed is that there's a much wider distribution of panhandling. A lot of people associate those, those panhandlers with people who are homeless. They may or may not be, as you noted. But I'm, I think many people are concerned about the impact that could have on our neighborhoods. And I've seen the panhandlers distributed throughout the city much more widely in residential neighborhoods where they previously, where I never saw them in the many years that I've lived here. Are there, are you, could you present, or maybe this is a question for the chief, are there any associated criminal concerns with this activity? In other words, have they impacted neighborhoods? What is the impact on our neighborhoods as a result of this panhandling situation?
Well, panhandling itself...
Yeah, or related activities.
Yeah, we do have criminal cases where the individual is described as being homeless, both as the victim and both as a suspect, as far as panhandling goes. It's more of a social problem that we have. Again, we have our panhandling ordinances, where you can only stand certain places in the street. Our object and intent is to clear the street corner and then gain voluntary compliance. So, we will make summons periodically, only when we have that individual, again, who's a repeat offender. But as far as the panhandler involved in some kind of violent criminal activity, we do not have very much of that.
Or robbery, or larcenies, or theft, or, you're not, so you're not seeing a connection, correlation between people who are entering neighborhoods or adjacent to neighborhoods and panhandling, and then committing crimes in those neighborhoods? It's not a problem?
We have not, we have not had a large number. We have homeless folks who do commit crimes. We have, as Andy said, some of the individuals that we have interacted with are not, in fact, homeless. This is how they make a living.
Thank you.
Okay. John, Barbara, and Jim.
Well, first, Andy, thanks, and it's a pleasure to work with you on the community development thing. This is a good brief, but I want to go back and, some of the new members here, and some of the, I've been here for a while, remind you of the Virginia Tech study that we had back in 2016, and I'd just like to read two little, it's on page three of that report, and if others want it, you can secure it from Andy. But it talked about further, the average wage earnings of employees, because wages is one of the biggest issues. Of the nine of the top 10 industries in the city of Virginia Beach, by employment were too low to afford the median rent of $1,200 in 2014. And in six of those 10 industries, the average wages were too low to afford the median rent, even if the workers doubled up. So, one of our fundamental issues, our wage structure for our private sector economy is out of alignment with almost any affordable rent market strategy that we might have, so I think we can't lose track of that. Then it goes on to say that the number of households that struggle to afford housing, along with other necessities, is growing faster than the number of households overall, which their comment was, were becoming increasingly, as a total wealth basis, less wealthy as a consequence of that. And that 1/3 of the households in Virginia Beach were cost burden, meaning more than 30% of their income. Now, that was in 2016, but what makes that interesting, there was recently a Congressional Budget Office report that studied income distribution by households from 2016 forecasted to 2021. And one of the conclusions in here is the lowest quintile of average income before taxes and, before tax transfers, that's food stamps, all this kind of benefits, and taxes, was $20,600 in 2016, and it was only $21,900 forecasted for '21. So, that's just giving you the magnitude of the struggle. Now, it did, which was interesting, in this report also talked about that the average household at the bottom was getting about $11,000 in income transfers, meaning earned income tax credit, with its housing benefits, Medicaid, so that kind of changes that. But I only mention it because you talked about the strategies, and when you look at these, this is the reality of what the people have. It has both about our economic development strategy in terms of what industries we choose to subsidize, which sometimes is always at the low end of the scale, we need to rethink that, and also just what the art of the possible is in terms of how affordable you can make rent. These are very, like I said, the data speaks for itself, but I just thought it would be good to remind us of that Virginia Tech study, and this is a very good Congressional Budget Office study. That's all.
Thanks, John. Barbara.
Well, Andy, you started out by thanking the council for the funding and so forth, and, you know, it needs to be the other way around. Back when we were just going to do that move from the original little place we had there by the convention center, and we were just going to move it down the street, and we said, then we decided, no, we weren't going to do that, we wanted something more. It was, it was your attitude and the attitude of your staff that has been so amazing, you know, because when you tell somebody, no, we're not going to do that, do something else, that could have been another attitude. But you've had such a great attitude, and have such a great attitude in your staff, of really getting to this problem and, because there were a lot of obstacles to overcome, just finding a site, and then where you've taken it is really amazing. But I think folks tend to think of homelessness, you know, when they do see the panhandler on the street, and they wonder why we're not doing anything for homeless people, and don't really think of this really broad aspect of all of it that you folks have developed. And somehow or other, I guess you continually try to get your message out to people, but that's, that's the thing, because people want us to do something for the homeless, and understanding that it is a lot, and even what John just said about, you know, the income levels and the ability to pay rent, and the whole thing of affordable housing, because as soon as you say affordable housing to somebody, it's not in my backyard, and no subsidized housing, and that kind of thing. It's such a really, really big issue, and it's just, well, we all, we just have challenging issues, we don't have issues. But you've done such a great job with it, and just want to say thank you to you and your staff.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara. Jim?
Thanks. And I agree with everything that Barbara said, because, and I've shared this with you before, I think it's a great success story, everything that you've done with, not only homeless, but low-income, and elderly homeowners, and everything throughout there. Kind of following up on the panhandler thing, I did notice that some of the panhandlers have gotten a little bit more creative with respect to staying out of the street and everything with the long poles and all that kind of stuff.
I've seen that.
And I see, and I'll also tell you, talking to some first responders, you know, volunteer incidents that have gone through, and I remember one of them telling me that, you know, they went into a house, and they knew the patient looked familiar, then it dawned on him, it was the guy that stands out on the street, he owned the house, and all his signs were stacked neatly on his dining room table that he did, that said he was homeless and all that kind of stuff. So, there is a bit of, I guess, a bit of fraud there. But getting back to the overall thing, and maybe you don't know this answer, but how many total beds are there available, both city-owned and privately, you know, through the nonprofit or faith-based?
Pam, I'm going to see if Pam has that answer. Pam, Sean?
So, when you say beds, are you referring to my current housing bed, shelter beds, or all of it?
I mean, and kind of going back to Chief Dean last week, kind of gave us an example of, you know, if they interact with a homeless person, and they're in crisis and they need a place to stay.
Shelter bed.
Where do they go?
So, we have 165 total shelter beds in our system.
And that's private and public?
It's private and public.
Okay.
Yes, it's ran by our nonprofits, and they are for different segments of our population. So, some of those beds are for youth, ages nine through 17, some of those beds are for families, some of those beds are for families experiencing domestic violence, and then we have 51 beds available at HRC for single adult men and women.
So, what is the delta between, then, the homeless versus the available beds?
I think you mentioned it in this...
Yeah, I think we have up here that, for instance, any given winter night, we're getting 60 to 80 persons going to winter shelter.
Going to the winter shelter program.
Right. And that's, that's at least an approximation. There are still some people in the woods who don't go to winter shelter, because they don't want to. Go ahead.
Households that are unsheltered.
Yeah.
80 households, which is how many people?
Mostly single households, the great majority of our population.
So, is that 100 beds then, likely?
Right.
So, my question, kind of going back to this, is this, is a solution to this, us building more beds? Is a solution us acquiring property or long-term leases with, you know, apartment complexes, or is, and what's the impact of CDC on it? I mean, there's a lot of things. I mean, you know, we can talk globally about, yeah, we're going to end homelessness, and we're going to do this and do that, but, but I mean, you know, just the tactical decision, you know, right now, is, do we need to, does this council need to budget additional funding to build or acquire beds, or is it better to work on the programs? And that's, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I mean, basically, you know, that's what I'm looking at, and I know CDC, we talk about, you know, kind of longer-term, maybe not traditionally homeless, but certainly low-income people. But if we've got 100 people at any given time that we can't shelter, that's a problem.
Yes, sir. So, I would not give you a recommendation right here, but I think, having, you having asked that question, we are happy to evaluate. We're going to look at all the options that are available. So, as I said, we're doing resource development. We're helping to develop affordable housing with your help, such as Renaissance and 200 West at Price Street. It may be that more shelter is needed, but we have to be careful that we don't focus our resources on shelter, because some cities have made that mistake, and then you, because a person sheltered is still homeless. So, I want to be really careful that we, we make the right request of how to increase our system, and I really appreciate the question, but if we could come back after doing some work on it, that would be great.
I just remember, and I put Chief Dean on the spot again here, but you mentioned that there was, there was a homeless individual that your officers were involved with, and they had paid out of pocket to, to put them in a hotel room for the night.
Yeah.
Because, you know, they needed immediate shelter, and that's the kind of thing, it's great that we have police officers and city employees that are willing to do that, but that's not the long-term solution.
Not sustainable.
Yeah, I mean, we, and I just appreciate the response that you can have over time on this, but it's just, you know, when I see 80 households, maybe 100 people, that we cannot shelter.
Right.
That disturbs me, so.
We appreciate the question, and we'll come back.
Okay, Sabrina.
I just want to, again, as already been said, commend you and your staff for all the work that you do. Because what I understand is that homelessness, the people who are in need, we will always have them with us. There's no one end-all term solution, but what I appreciate is the way you and the staff and those throughout the city and other departments help people get through it, because sometimes, as you mentioned, it's not just about getting them housing.
Right.
That's the optimal solution, and that's something that we would love to do for everyone, but that's just not where everyone actually is at that time. Sometimes people have other needs, and so I just appreciate just the wide array of services that you have available to help people work through it. And from what I am seeing is that people who are homeless and those who are struggling and in a poverty status, they're a part of our community, and it is a community issue, and it takes community resources. And we all have a responsibility of addressing it, which is why I appreciate the conversations that we've had about bringing awareness. I think that's a key. There are some people who just don't know about all the services, and sometimes it's just sharing a card. I know you've given me some cards, and to share and ask people, do you know about the services? And some say they don't know. And so, bringing awareness to, you know, the location, the Housing Resource Center, and other services that we have, sometimes that's all some people need, just to know. So, just want to say that I appreciate just the wide array of services that you offer, and I just look forward to working with you on this issue, because I really think the community as a whole, they want to do something. When they see panhandlers in the road around the community, they want to know what's the right thing to do. Should I give money?
Right.
You know, should I redirect? What is it that I can do? Because everybody wants to help do something. They just want to know what's the right thing to do.
Right, exactly.
So, I look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much, and I want to say, agree with you, that we have a very generous community, and they have demonstrated that generosity through the foundations that we work with, and so we're blessed with that.
Anybody else? Guy?
One quick question.
Yes, sir.
Andy, thank you for all that you and your great staff does and are doing as we speak. My question's about the funding and its alignment with what you and your staff believe are best practices. I take it, since I haven't heard anything to the contrary, am I right, that the HUD funding that is available generally, the conditions of it are not burdensome in terms of being misaligned with what you think?
I, you're correct.
I would tweak it if you could, but in general, is that true?
Yes, yes. We've, I think the federal government has been actually a leader in finding the best practices and supporting them with their funding.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Andy, on behalf of, I think, a grateful council and a grateful city, you folks do some stellar work out there, and make Virginia Beach the great place it is. Thank you, and God bless all of you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Anything else? We are adjourned. Thank you.